Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Hingham Selectmen's Meeting for Thursday, March 6th at 7:00. We have a long meeting this evening. We have minutes to approve from a couple of meetings. We will have a discussion concerning the Foss Memorial article and a reopening of that article, based on the Historic Commission advice we've received. We'll have at 7:30 a legislative update from Representatives Bradley and Murphy. Senator Hedlund was to be here, but he is in session and I'm told will not be available this evening. And then at 8:00 it's our plan to vote on budgets, and we'll go through those in some detail. And the budgets we're voting on this evening are the school budget, community planning, the health insurance, the unemployment numbers, our Medicare, the dispatch budget, which you heard about last week, the assessors, and our final resolution on capital outlay. We'll then proceed to a discussion on Warren articles, the street acceptance article for Bear Cove Park Drive, the noise bylaw, transfer from the stabilization fund, a reallocation of funds to the meals tax stabilization, a real allocation of funds to reduce the tax rate. So we'll produce those in that order. And then a meals tax revenue to reduce the tax rate. There's an article to deal with the subject of insurance recovery in excess of $20,000. And we have a Community Preservation Committee projects discussion at the end. And I forgot to add, at the street acceptance, we'll have a discussion from Roger Fernandez to deal with some contract revisions. But before we do any of that, I have a couple of announcements to make. The first and more somber one, and very sorry to report that last weekend Ed Monahan, a member of the Sewer Commission, passed away unexpectedly. The services for Ed are tomorrow, Friday, at McDonald's Funeral Home on Route 18 in Waymouth, from 3:00 to 8:00. And there's a mass Saturday morning at St. Paul's at 11:00. So I would hope you all express your condolences to the Monahan family, and as we, the Board of Selectmen, do on your behalf. In addition, I have a formal announcement which will be given to the press this evening. And if you'll forgive me, I'll read it directly. The Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator Ted Alexiottis announced it has entered into negotiations to purchase a building that would allow for the expansion of the town's senior center and recreation department. As the announcement says, "I'm excited to announce that the Town of Hingham will be negotiating to purchase the former headquarters of Hingham Mutual Insurance. We have been on the lookout for space that will allow us to meet the expansion that meets the needs of our senior center and, as you know, the growing recreation department. This opportunity would be perfect and offers the important additional benefit that we could preserve most of the open space so that it can be enjoyed by residents and visitors for years to come." The parcel is approximately 12 acres with 40,000 square feet. It's a two-story structure. The address of the property is 230 Beale Street. It borders Back River, Bear Cove Park, and Lynch Field. We know it is important for the current owners that Hingham residents, especially close neighbors, are happy with the new occupants of this property and we're confident that the Town of Hingham would be an outstanding steward of its natural beauty. I know there have been many, this is an editorial comment on my part, I know there have been many rumors to this effect. This is a large corporation we're dealing with. Their timeline that is in the discussion is not our timeline. They have things they have to deal with, independent of our struggles, but we're hopeful that this, that we'll be able to resolve this matter, one way or the other, in a reasonable amount of time. Is there anything, Mr. Alexiottis, you think I should add? So I will be happy to talk about that if anyone has any questions. Okay. Yes, Carol?
How much is it going to cost?
I said we're in negotiations.
And the ballpark, will it take you up to prove it?
No. Yes, of course. Well, it depends when we discuss the negotiations. You know, the ballpark numbers, you know, the real estate, if you go to the real estate, they can tell you what's out there, but go ahead, Ted.
We're trying diligently to resolve it prior to town meeting, so that we don't have to have a special town meeting, but we're negotiating. So we need to be respectful of the other side in the process.
Okay. I can tell you, it's more than a stickball bat. It's not cheap. But I think one of the reasons we're pursuing this, just to editorialize further, is the cost to build new for the estimated square footage we need for the residents, for the senior center, coupled with the cost to expand recreation, is considerable. And as you know, there's an article on town meeting floor this year for this building to do some work on it. And just what is that work going to be, and how long is it going to take, and how much is that going to cost? So does this building afford us an opportunity? We think it might, but the devil, as I'm told, is always in the details. So we'll see where this goes. I don't know if my colleagues who know about this, do you have any comments or anything?
No.
Okay. Okay. So let us proceed to the first item on the agenda.
The minutes?
The minutes, thank you. Are there any comments in the minutes? Our four. A lot of dates. Let's take them forward. From January 30th, February 6th, February 18th, and February 20th. I have seen the notation and changes on the February 20th meeting. That's okay with me. Are there any other comments on the minutes?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Healy?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. Irma, would you be so kind?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from January 30th, 2014, February 6th, 2014, February 18th, 2014, and February 20th, 2014.
Have a second? Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Some weeks ago, we took a vote to deal with the question of a Foss Memorial. And in the course of that vote, there was an issue raised as to whether or not could we do it, because under the town naming law, we required the Historic Commission to weigh in and give, quote, "advice." While we thought we had done that when the issue was first arose, we thought it prudent to make sure that everyone understood what the new memorial proposal should be, and therefore it was important to get the Historic Commission's second opinion on this proposal, which they have given to us, which we will discuss later. And I'm very appreciative that they dealt with it as quickly as they did. But as a result of that discussion and other comments, I think it's appropriate that the original prior recommendation of Article P be amended and revised into two separate articles. One article, which will call for the purposes of preparation, Article Q2, QQ, would ask the town to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the use of the Foss Memorial Committee in design, permitting, and construction of a memorial to Seaman Herbert Foss, or act on anything thereto. It will be our article as the selectmen. The money associated with this is an article, is in the amount of $40,000, as we stated in the previous article. The second article, which I believe has caused some further discussion, was would the town appropriate, will approve, the naming of the Hingham Inner Harbor, the Herbert L. Foss Memorial Park, or act on anything relating thereto? This one appears to have caused more serious questions and discussion, and as I mentioned, the Historical Commission put forth a series of questions that would seek to revise that article in terms of wanting to have additional information and data put forth. I personally am in support of the issue, and I will vote, announcing my position, no action on that article, pending the answer to the questions that the Historical Commission has put forth. And I would ask the Foss Committee to deal with those questions. And in addition, there is a proposal by one of my peers, and I'll let him talk to it, to expand the current Foss Committee to a total of nine members. And this will be a vote of this evening. Three members of the Veterans Council, one member of the Planning Board, one member of the Harbor Development Committee, and four citizens at large. And in this article, at the same time, as I mentioned earlier, we will transfer the sum of $40,000 for use by the Foss Memorial Committee to proceed that. But there's one important phrase in the motion that we will make, and that is that the design that put forth shall be subject to a 25%, 50%, 75%, and final review, similar to the process that we go through in many of our planning projects. Many of us have seen Roger Fernandez many times come back repeatedly, giving us a status report. And this is a way to ensure that the design process goes forward with the active participation of the Board of Selectmen. So I've said a lot in the few minutes that I've just taken, but I think that's the sum and substance of the discussion for the Foss Memorial Committee. So I don't know, Irma, any comments?
I certainly support, and I think, the Historical Commission. This is an incredibly well-done document. And I think what it also sets in writing, this was the first process we went through in the first committee under any, the new naming bylaw. But what you've done in this document is set forth a process for everybody that comes after, because the first one is usually the guinea pig. And also, I think, on a go-forward basis, the Foss Committee can use this to continue the process. I support the bifurcation of the article. I don't support the expansion to nine members. I think seven is more than plenty, and going to nine's a crowd. I can't imagine what the Board of Selectmen would be like with nine members. We'd probably be here until 2:00 in the morning every meeting. So I think seven is plenty. First I'm seeing of the 20, 50, and 75% final review, I don't know that we need to see it that often. I trust the seven members we have now, and they can give us updates as they go along. To me, that's a lot. We don't put any other committee through this. Just my thoughts.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for those, very well articulated. Paul?
Thank you. I support the idea of breaking it up, and I echo your sentiments with respect to the naming issue of the Inner Harbor. The memo prepared by the Historical Commission was excellent, both in terms of its breadth and scope. And I think it correctly identified that with respect to the name, there's so many moving parts in the Hingham Harbor, and so many affected parties, that this simply couldn't be sorted out in time for this year's town meeting. In terms of the nine-member board proposal, this is an extremely complex, valuable area of public property. It's the town's waterfront. This is what we see on the postcards sent from Hingham. There are so many different issues here, that the addition of two more members, I think, would complement and enhance the deliberative process. To say that nine members is, you know, would keep you up till 2:00 in the morning. We have an advisory committee that has significantly more than nine members, and that works fairly well.
Fairly well? Let me defend the advisory committee. It works extraordinarily well, sorry.
The point I'm trying to make is that the addition of two members, I think, will enhance the deliberative and the evaluative process. There's so many issues here that, if done properly, will keep the board, the Foss Committee, the committee charged with coming up with a memorial in the harbor, quite busy. And I think that the idea of having a phased review is something that is a basic planning board technique that we use on a regular basis. We see it in the state projects. We're going through that on the Derby Street Corridor project presently. And it gives, it gives the Board of Selectmen, representatives of the people, the opportunity to make threshold assessments, to make sure that the project is heading in the right direction, and that it reflects the kind of memorial that the town as a whole considers appropriate. I think that's an excellent idea, and I wholeheartedly support it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both. Those were good comments. Let me just add some more comments of my own. One of the issues that has come up has been the fact that we believe that there may be other, quote, "residents of Hingham" who may be, have received the Medal of Honor. I remind you at the time that the charge of the committee was to develop a memorial to Seaman Foss, who received his Medal of Honor as a result of actions taken in 1898. I do not dispute that there may be other members. I think the question of debate is, did someone receive the medal as a summer resident of Hingham? And there is one such person who received it in the Civil War. And he received that medal, and I may add, as everyone, most of the medals of the Medal of Honor were received and given in the Civil War, as appropriate. There were no Silver Stars or Bronze Stars at that time. In addition, the, I think those other Medal of Honors, if this town so chose, could be recognized. That's up to the town. But that was not the task of this committee. The task of this committee was to honor Seaman Foss, who has been determined to be a member and a resident of the town at the time of his death. Yes, he was not born here, but he chose to live here, and he worked for the town in addition to being, receiving the Medal of the Medal of Honor. So I believe that those other medal recipients should be considered, but I raise the question that I know in one case, one member who received, one prospective recipient of the member, of the medal, lives in the city of Boston, is buried in the city of Boston, and he received it in the Civil War. And he has not been recognized by the city of Boston, which would be my, which surprises me if that was the case. There are other ways we could recognize him, because he married into a very prominent family in the town of Hingham. And I think that would be, if the town so chose, we could recognize him. Some of the other newer members that have come up, or recipients that have come up for discussion, I am not familiar with. I do not doubt, but whether or not they too are permanent residents of the city of the town of Hingham, that's a question for the others to decide. This committee has been put forth to recognize Seaman Foss. In addition, I think I agree with some of the discussions on the scope and the design. What is it? How much is it? What part of the harbor does it, does it cover? What about the other properties on the harbor that already have names? All of those need further detailed discussion. And my recommendation in the comments would be that we give that, questions of the Historic Commission, to the Foss Memorial Committee to address. And that would, I think, as Irma very correctly stated, it was a very good, detailed report in helping us get, move this along. But I come back to the main issue was, we asked people to recognize Seaman Foss. That was the task at hand, and that's what I am hopeful will, will be the task that the town will ultimately see approved at some future date, whatever that design is. This year, we're just asking the town to set aside $40,000 to keep this process moving. That's the commitment I've made to our state representatives, one of whom has just arrived. And that's the commitment I think this Seaman should receive, and therefore I am voting in favor of that issue. There are people in the audience who may want to add comments to this, just for, we have a couple of minutes before we take any actions, so I'll open it up for questions. Sir? Come to the microphone if you would, and tell us your name and...
I'm bringing stuff.
You can't use all that paper. We don't have enough time. Thank you. Thank you.
John Clifton, Cushing Street.
Yes, John.
And I've been, thanks for letting me speak. I think it's a great idea, picking up the Hingham. Fire. That's good. I spent 25 years in the Navy, and I know you served, and others have as well that are here. To me, honoring the Medal of Honor awardees is critical. It's a really important task. Clearly, Seaman Foss is extremely deserving of recognition, both for his time he lived here, and, you know, it fits many criteria. He's buried here still. I got involved in this process about a month ago actively. I've been monitoring it for a year. And I was concerned when I saw things popping up in the newspaper and in the minutes that just concerned me. And so I'm concerned about the process, and I'm concerned about the substance. The process I'm looking at, and we don't need to rehash two years of this committee, and I don't intend to do that. But we've ended up, at the end of two years, with a less-than-ideal situation. I mean, the concept of naming the Inner Harbor, you know, was not vetted. It wasn't done properly. It wasn't coordinated through all the proper channels, committees, et cetera, in the town. And that concerns me about the rest of the process. One of the big things that concerns me is a disregard for the other recipients of the Medal of Honor. Blackmar has been painted as being this summer resident. He maintained a country home here, which is different than a summer home. He lived here for 25 years.
Yes, and as I understand it, his history would say that he lived next door to, in Boston, to a member, to the moderator of the town, if history is right.
Yeah, you know, things evolve in town over years, and, you know, now people jet off to Florida and Naples, and they have summer homes there, but they are residents. So I've provided you a comment about the five Medal of Honor recipients. I'm the guy that did the research on it. I believe it's true. Unequivocally, those five people did receive the Medal of Honor with tremendous bravery. And they, at different times, resided and/or worked, lived in the town with their families. And I think that while the original mission was to focus on Foss and to honor him, we have new information now that we didn't have at the beginning of the process that has to be considered. I think it'd be a real travesty to only honor Foss with this committee, and to ignore the other four. You know, in my view, four wrongs don't make a right. And I think we have to honor all five. It makes sense to reformulate this committee, rather than honoring just Foss. What a celebration it would be when we honor all five. I'm not done.
Okay.
Unless you tell me I'm done. I can come back for seconds if you want.
No, no. You're getting close to being done now, okay?
My other concern is the process. And we went through this nightmare with the post office, the town hall, the town civic center, you know, we got that. But somehow, we jumped from town hall, civic center, to presentation of a mausoleum out on the waterfront. I can find no record of any meetings being conducted that got us to that point. And I'm just concerned that that was done in a vacuum. And I think that, you know, I think the open meeting law needs to be looked at, because we got to that point with no debate. There was no input from the community on a potential designs, or how people would like it to look. You know, we just, here it is, and now go vote on it. And so, taking all that together, I have a problem. I don't think we should name the Inner Harbor, because we have no idea what the Inner Harbor is. And I find it difficult to give $40,000 to a flawed process. I just want to close here. The criteria for selecting Seaman Foss Memorial Site, the memorial should be sufficient prominence as to place Seaman Foss on a pinnacle by himself, since he is Hingham's only recipient of the Congressional Medal of Honor. The Foss Committee was founded with inaccurate information. There are five other people, there are four other people that resided in this town that received the Medal of Honor under tremendous bravery. And I think with some minor adjustments, rather than just focusing on Foss, I think we could do tremendous service and honor all five appropriately. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Those were very well said.
I'd like to comment if I could.
Sure, please.
I don't have the track record that the two of you do with respect to this issue on the voting, but in coming to the votes that I did initially, I was laboring under the belief that Herbert Foss was, in fact, the only Hingham resident that was a recipient of the Medal of Honor. It's since come to light that that's simply inaccurate. So I'm deeply concerned that we're prioritizing one individual over others. And I think that this is such a rarefied group of men, that we have it within us to include that as part of the discussion, as to how to best make that work in a very positive way, so that the Army Lieutenant, and the Navy Lieutenants, and the Marine Corps Sergeant, and the Marine Corps Captain, one of whom earned the Medal of Honor at the Battle of Pelelo, is recognized, and recognized appropriately, so that one isn't better than the others. You know, there's a, I get the Army Times, just, I kind of follow along with my kid. And today, there is an article in the paper that the, a Marine Corporal, William Carpenter, is set to receive the Medal of Honor for landing on a hand grenade and absorbing the blast with his body to save his buddy. There's a video of him talking about it, and he's got a purple heart where his right eye once was, and his face was completely rebuilt. I think what these men went through, and there's one woman, so for the most part, it's men, but what these men went through to earn this Medal of Honor deserves to have them at a seat at the table. And I'm not necessarily saying what the ultimate design should be, but I think that their presence and their connection with the town of Hingham is too important to just compartmentalize at this point. The waterfront represents the crown jewel of our town landscape. You know, we've paid heavily for the property that we've acquired there in the last 15 years. I see no harm in opening this conversation up to include an analysis as to what, what could also include a recognition of these men.
Can I comment too? Sure. Go ahead.
Just in response, and thank you for, and that was a great document, because it was sent to me also with all the Medal of Honor winners. This committee was constituted to deal with Foss. He has been totally vetted, and his track record is very clear. Way I look at this, I think the committee should be allowed to continue along the way. We know there are other people that need to be looked at and vetted in the same manner. I think this committee should be allowed to continue along their way, come forth with a proposal for Foss. There has been some talk about a Medal of Honor park. Perhaps another committee could be put together to deal with Blackmar and/or the other folks. Blackmar seems to have popped to the top now. And perhaps that committee will suggest a memorial in the same area as the Foss Memorial. And by definition, you're going to end up with a Medal of Honor park. Another thought would be, in the naming of the Inner Harbor, I didn't realize that was subject to so many rules, regulations, names, et cetera, and so forth. But a thought, just to throw out there, we are going to, at some point, hopefully within my lifetime, have a path... my lifetime, have a path that goes from Barnes 2 all the way to Otis Street. And it's be a walkable path, whether, I plan to be a bicycle path to maybe if it fits. Why not call that the Medal of Honor Walk? Now, I'm not suggesting that, but throwing that out for the committees. But I do think the committee has worked for two years. They aren't the first committee that forgets to post minutes. I can give you a list. We kept a list of that. So, they have labored for two years. I think they should, as constituted now with the seven members, be allowed to continue along and come up with a proposal for Foss. Just one thought, too, on advisory. Advisory has 15 members. It is punishing duty, but it's probably one of the most satisfying things you can do with the town. They're responsible for every budget, and they have to know it in detail. And that's why there's 15 of them. And also, for the recommended motion that goes to town meeting on every single warrant article. Some are more painful than others, as we know. So, that's why you have 15 members. This is a fairly small, but very, very important objective that we have with this committee because it will set the standard for perhaps what we do for all of the Medal of Honor winners and all of the ones coming along that we don't even know about. So, just my thoughts.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to break the point.
Keep it brief, please.
Yeah. I reached out to Dr. Gallo to see if there was an interest on the part of the school students to participate in working on, coming up with a design in accordance with this ongoing effort. I believe that the broader the outreach, the broader the involvement, both with the veterans of the community, but also the citizens of this town, the more likely that the prospects of success for a lasting, meaningful memorial are going to be attained and achieved. So, I depart from Ms. Lauder's view that a small select committee can decide what's best. I think that a strong community involvement assures that this is going to be a success.
Okay. Mr. Hershey.
Yes, my name is John Hershey. I'm very impressed because I was at the meeting with the historical commission the other night in the harbor development, two committees which you people have appointed. And I think this is great going forward, that they found a problem, they came to you, and we can stop some part of it before it goes to town meeting. So, I thought this was very good, that it was stopped here before it goes forward and give it going forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. One more. I'm keeping our state rep delayed, and you guys decide. Okay. They sent the shorter one. I see. Okay, Tom.
This is already...
Not sure.
Go ahead, Tom.
Tom Wilson, 88 Summer Street, chairman of the Historical Commission. And thank you for the compliments of the work that was done Monday. And I just, for the record, I want to thank Andrea Young and Bob Curley, who actually wrote the memo, and it is very detailed. And it was great, it was great to hear that you've agreed with all of it, or most of it. The only clarification I want to make clear is that we felt that the, going forward, that it should be more of an inclusive approach, along with what Paul was just talking about, that now that we've discovered these other possible recipients that would qualify, we think it would, it makes more sense to us to look at the whole population and the future population rather than to try to just continue in one vein with Mr. Foss, who is very deserving, no question about that, but to have a broader plan. Now, whether the monument is built first for Mr. Foss, that's perfectly okay, but there should be a comprehensive plan going forward, not excluding the other possible recipients. That's probably the only issue that would...
Okay, that's, thank you, Tom. You took words out of my mouth. Let me go back, recount, I like people who like to rewrite history, but I'm not going to let it happen. This was a committee formed to honor Seaman Foss. I think we should proceed with that effort, but I think the comments that Tom just made and comments I've heard from others should require that if in that analysis they could reconfirm that it may be more appropriate to expand this recognition to some others to be included with, in the memorial, the committee could do that.
Excellent.
In my opinion. I think that makes it the inclusive issue that people want to be sure takes place. But I will be very frank. I will not see Seaman Foss dragged on any longer. It's time we got up and honored him. 115 years? We should be ashamed. Weymouth has five high schools named after Medal of Honor winners. What's the matter with us? Shame on us. I want to see this proceed for Seaman Foss. If in the course of that deliberation, these other members who are, may be very deserving, it opens up another question of what constitutes residency. That's not an issue for me to decide. The Congress of the United States doesn't ask you what town you're from. They gave you a medal for what you did. And that's what we should do in this case. Honor the one we are sure that, of what he did. So, I am perfectly content, and I'm going to flip this for the moment, if we withdraw the motion to name the harbor and take no action on that pending the committee's deliberation as to what, if any, other action should be taken to honor these other members whom I do not know. So be it, but let the committee come back to us with that. The expanded committee, in my opinion. Now, I've talked to some of the members of the Foss Committee. They're okay with our withdrawal of the memorial park name for the Inner Harbor. So, let me put that forth as a motion, that we take no action on the town naming of the Hingham Inner Harbor or the area of the Inner Harbor, the Herbert L. Foss Memorial Park at this time.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Do you mean take no action at town meeting or remove it from the warrant? I think that was a question that we had for you.
Remove it from the warrant.
I think I'd remove it from the warrant.
Okay, I agree. So, we just want to reflect in the minutes of the vote.
To remove it from the warrant.
Reflect it to remove the warrant.
Remove it from the warrant. Now, to the article on expanding the committee, I think that's the inclusive nature that's come up. And while some people may not agree, I'm of Irma's mind. Boy, those of you who've worked in corporate America, you know, they can fill a ballroom with committee members. So, somehow or other, we figure out a way to make it work, and our advisory committee has done a great job of doing that. So, I'm in favor of the nine members and giving them the $40,000. So, Mr. Healy, if you would make a motion on that?
I move that the town expand the current Foss Committee to a total of nine members to be constituted as follows. Three members of the Veterans Council, one member of the Planning Board, and one member of the Harbor Development Committee, and four citizens at large. And two, transfer the sum of $40,000 from available funds for use by the Foss Memorial Committee in the design permitting and construction of a memorial to Seaman Herbert Foss. The design shall be subject to a 25%, 50%, 75% and final review and approval by the Board of Selectmen.
Can I get a point of clarification?
Sure.
Are you suggesting another member of the Harbor Development Committee? Because you've got two of them on there already.
There's only one? No.
No, you have two. You've got Bill Riordan, who was just added, and Alan Peralta.
I believe his term expires shortly.
But you have two, and you would, I would assume he would go...
Alan's term expires this...
In June.
In June.
In June.
Yeah, so you're right.
You would replace it with somebody else from Harbor Development, the way this thing is constructed.
Well, Bill Riordan.
How do I say, I agree with this, but I don't agree with the nine. I want to stay with the seven. But I agree, in essence, with the entire article. I'm troubled by creating a planning process for this committee when they've got to go before the Planning Board anyway. But I'm against going to nine. That's too many people.
I believe that the expertise level would be significantly enhanced by the addition of two additional members. This is a, this is a multi-layered permitting process, or at least it could very well be. And I think that, again, the more input we have from the public, from the citizens of this town, the more likely this project is going to be a significant success.
But you know you would get that from the open meetings, which I believe this committee's going to have on the design and everything versus having nine people on a committee.
There's one question? Yep.
Possible solution, if you go to nine, perhaps those two additional people could be given the added task of looking at the other four and making sure whatever is done for Foss would accommodate additional memorials or memorialization of the four that integrates with the overall Foss effort that fits into the overall design and construct of the waterfront or wherever it happens to go. So, if you added two, maybe they'd have a specified task in addition to supporting.
Okay. Thank you. That's very good. Mr., all right, councillor now, you're not in court.
And I'm going to be here till the end of the night, so I'll be brief. I would just respectfully request that you consider, with respect to this motion, including a member of the Historical Commission because presumably people will be coming back to us for advice, and it would be good to have a liaison. And secondly, I would also consider that you formalize the comments that you made about review of other appropriate recipients within the purview of this committee.
Okay, thank you, Bob. That was, first of all, let me get to the liaison issue. That, confusing. If you want to have people go to the meeting, that's fine, and they could participate, but not as voting members. Otherwise, they vote twice, and I have an issue, we have a couple of committees that do that, and it just gets confusing. Keep them clean. To the issue of memorializing the comments, I think the minutes would reflect this, and I'll make sure that when we review these, we'll incorporate them.
Could they be integrated into the vote, though? I think is what Mr. Curley is saying.
Yes, I think with respect to what goes before town meeting, that the town meeting should know...
What the charges is.
And I think Bill Riordan made the point before the AdCon last week, that this process should be celebratory, not divisive. And I think by adding those words to the motion that clearly indicates that the committee can take into account and vet others and then determine whether we need one or multiple memorials, that we make it more of the celebratory process than it should be rather than a potentially divisive process. Nobody, the Historical Commission certainly agrees that Seaman Foss is well-deserving of being honored, and that certainly a considerable amount of time has gone by, even more time has gone by for Mr. Blackmar. And so, I think that would be a helpful addition to the motion and in complete keeping with the spirit and principles of this town.
Thank you very much. That's very good. All right. Now, I'm trying to write something.
How are you doing this?
And I have to remember that I'm not in Greek class anymore, so I have, I would just add on articles, a third clause to the article, that the committee recommend the question of dealing with additional recipients in the future. And that would explore the question of, that expands their focus. And I think I heard from a gentleman who's in the audience today, and I know he doesn't want to be mentioned, but I will anyway, from a retired Navy captain, Peter Finney, that the question should be this celebratory approach of how do we add others in the future? Can we incorporate that into the design? And then, that would address the question, just as John mentioned earlier in his comments when he brought up the question, that, look, in a month, I found these others that may be qualified, I'm not so sure, but that would be a good way to do it.
One last question for you. How are the additional two members going to be chosen, or have they been chosen already?
No, I haven't chosen anybody.
Okay. Well, the first time I saw this was when we opened the, so I've not had time to even digest this.
I think we'll reexamine the membership, bring it back after we vote it. All right?
Paul?
I, I'm all for it.
Bring it back.
Let's go.
Okay. All right, so what did I just say? Now, I got to remember what I said. All right, and the committee recommend, recommend a procedure for dealing with additional recipients of the Medal of Honor.
Second.
Okay.
I'll vote in favor as long as there's an open discussion on who gets added to this committee.
Okay, that comment so noted.
And it will appear in the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I can't believe...
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay.
And maybe can I ask the town...
A second. We have a second. You have a second.
Can I ask the town administrator, if we get votes like this in the future, can we see them like at least an hour before the meeting? Because I just saw this when I opened the sheet.
So did I. Me too.
Well, somebody put it together.
Well...
Now you know what it feels like to be the legislature.
You know? Yep, Garrett.
Wait a minute.
Is this getting me ready for it?
I'm ready for it, folks. I'm ready for this. Listen.
Well, somebody put this together.
Wait a minute. The way, Garrett, isn't, Garrett, Jamie, isn't the answer, you know it when you read it, right? That's a, that's a famous expression these days, so let's, let's keep that in mind. All right. I apologize to our two representatives, if you'd be so kind to come on up and...
How are you, Bob?
Very good. How are you?
Good.
Thank you.
Lucky you had a show.
Is Bob hopefully voting on the Transportation Bond bill?
Yes.
Bob is voting on all the amendments that Representative Murphy and I shipped over to him. You can pass them on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I apologize for that delay.
He's unable to make it. They're still debating the Transportation Bond bill. First off, it was, it's always good to come to Hingham and see a thoughtful debate on an important issue, and I really appreciate the board's consideration of this issue for so long and the involvement of folks from the community and the Veterans Council and for your leadership, Mr. Chairman, on keeping this issue moving forward. And I'll be interested to see where we go at town meeting and what the next steps are.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Appreciate all your time.
No.
And I know we're a little bit backed up, so I'll, if you don't mind if I go first? Okay. I thought we'd come, and as we do every year, and give you a little update as to where we are as you're getting ready to prepare your budget. And again, Senator Hedlund isn't here, but just let me start with the Transportation Bond bill. As you're aware, myself, the senator, and Representative Murphy spoke with Ted several weeks ago before the Transportation Bond bill came up in the House. All of the issues that you asked us to include in the Bond bill have been included. All that information had been sent over to Senator Hedlund's office, and we'll have to wait till the debate is finished to see how many of those amendments are included in the Bond bill. Of course, as you know, just getting it in the Bond bill is step one, getting it authorized is another matter, which we are already working on with some funding that's actually going to be hitting the street quickly, which is basically funding that we did with the Transportation Reform Package last year. And I know there's some critical issues in there for Hingham on the Derby Street corridor and things of that nature. And so, I have a sense that those things will be resolved quickly, and hopefully, one or two of those projects will be authorized. I think the total between Derby Street and the Gardner Street area was about 4.5 million, Ted, am I right, between the two authorizations? Right in, right in that area.
You're the expert.
I like the chances of those not only being authorized, but being teed up for funding in the near future. So, we'll move forward on, on those issues. But in regards to the budget, the budget is, the governor laid out a $36.4 billion budget. It's a 4.9% increase over last year. The House will take that up the week of April 28th. The Senate will take it up the week before Memorial Day. We'll work out the differences and, and obviously, get it done probably close to July 1. I would suspect that since the session ends July 31st, that there may be some issues, whether they be vetoes or other issues that may hang over, but I suspect we're going to get that done in short order. There's talk of trying to give you a local aid resolution. We have not got to that point yet. My sense is that, having spoken to Ways and Means and with Representative Murphy, that the House anyways is certainly going to do more local aid than the governor did in his budget. We're on record, and the leadership is on record indicating that we're going to do that. My best estimate at this point, after speaking with Ways and Means, is probably about 5%. I suspect that the Senate, as it always does, will go a little... I suspect that the Senate, as it always does, will go a little higher than that, not only because they like making us look bad, but actually, in all fairness, they do get, they get to look at April revenue, which, as you know, is a significant month. We are running about a billion ahead, which I know you've probably read, and the MMA is probably talking to you about what we do with that. Now, remember, that's a billion over what we estimated to get this year. Some of that is new growth, some of that is some of the new revenue we did as part of the transportation plan. What we're committed to do on the House side is take a significant portion of that, probably 15%, and pay down the extension of the pension liability. As you know, in recessions, we, one of the games that we play to balance the budget is we extend the pension schedule. So we need to bring that back. We're also going to put a significant slug of money into the rainy day fund, which is 1.2 billion now, but was close to 3 billion at the beginning of the recession. Those two things, although not sexy, not what you want to hear, significantly help our bond rating, which is very good right now on the state level. And as you know, given the amount of short-term borrowing the state does, the better your bond rating, the lower your interest rates saves the taxpayers millions of dollars every year. So we're going to prioritize those two issues. I know as well, on my own, we'll be prioritizing special education circuit breaker, which is very important to communities. And just trying to see, I've also listed in here some of what the governor's numbers are, some of the legislation that has been pending that we're working on. We actually did include a piece of legislation which is in conference now that actually came from Al Chambers. Al had gone around and talked to folks and decided that it would be a wiser idea to appoint our veterans agents for up to three years, not mandating you do it, but allowing communities to do it rather than having to do that every year. So that was approved by the House and is in conference now, and I hope when it comes out of conference as a part of the Valor Act 2, that that will be in there and the governor will sign it into law. So I appreciate Al's work on that. And the last thing that I've included is the DPH had put out a alert regarding opiate abuse and how towns can start to look at that issue and address that issue. I've attached it at the back here, just so you would see it as you've been reading, I'm sure, in the newspapers. Opiate addiction, heroin overdoses have been absolute epidemic on the South Shore, and it's important for communities to be prepared. Thankfully, we're not as hard-hit as some of the other communities on the South Shore, but we are. It's just, I think it's just not as publicized. So I wanted to make sure folks had that and happy to pass that along to Chief of Police as well. Let me turn it over to Jamie, if he has any additional points on that, and then happy to take any questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I wanted to be here today. It's my first official meeting before all of you during a budget process. I was elected in November, so it's my first official meeting in the capacity of representative. Garrett and I have worked together for a long time, for 14 years now. We both went to high school together, believe it or not. He looks a lot older than I do.
Yes, a lot.
Now you know you're lying. He was actually a year behind me, but we've worked together for a long.
Isn't that a violation of the conflict of interest statute?
Yeah.
Bob asked me to represent him.
All this is a tough business, and we make it tougher on each other. But we've known each other for a long time. I've been in office for 14 years. I'm in my seventh term, as is Garrett, who will be going on our eighth term, and we've worked together for a long time. But I think now, for the first time in our official capacity together, Hingham has two state reps working on its behalf, so there's always strength in numbers. So as we go through the budget process, Garrett and I, you can see the numbers here, we talked about the governor's budget, but the House is now putting together our budget, and we are now setting up meetings between ourselves and the Ways and Means Committee, which writes the House budget. So Garrett and I are doing that now, and there's a number of priorities that we're working on together. One of the main ones being local aid. Our goal is to send as much local aid back to the community as possible. That's always the goal of every state rep during the budget process. The numbers speak for themselves here. I won't reiterate what Garrett said. Some of the legislation we talked about, the opiate addiction is important. I was a former assistant district attorney, so I know all about drug cases and the people that ended up falling into the control of illegal drugs. It's a very sad thing. It is an epidemic in the South Shore, and we're working on that together, Garrett and I, outside of the budget process. But I want you to know that I'm here for you this term, and for as long as I'm a state rep, I'll be here for you, especially during the budget process. Please call upon me. Garrett and I are in close contact. We talk literally every day, whether we have to or not. So we work well together. We always have, and it's a pleasure now, serving as state rep with him in Hingham, so.
Great. Oh, thank you. Thank you both. Just, I have a couple of questions up front, but I heard on, I was in Vermont this morning, and VPR had a story on the FEMA Act that the Congress took. Perhaps you might, if you know anything, yeah. And it was, oh, they heard it in Massachusetts. I thought it was interesting, they're talking about flooding in Vermont. They don't have a, but they do have a.
You'd be surprised. It really is a national issue. And, you know, I was reading, it's funny, I wish Senator Headland was here. We talked about this in Hall the other night, and I had said, you know, I had disagreed recently with, Wall Street Journal had an editorial, and shockingly, I disagreed with the Wall Street Journal editorial page. I know we probably disagree on that. But Senator Headland wasn't aware that I read the Wall Street Journal, and I.
Garrett, Garrett, I will, I will say you reversed my thinking.
So what they said was that they shouldn't reverse, or they shouldn't delay what was put through, but what I think you have to look at is what the impact was. And I'm sure, just like members of the legislature here, members of Congress passed what they thought, listened to the experts in the field, and then when it was implemented, it was vastly different than what was explained to them. So I think the action of the House to delay the implementation and now it's, obviously it's different from the Senate, so they're working out the differences, and I suspect that they will, because it has been a real groundswell of folks. Folks who have never been considered in a floodplain have issues. But remember, insurance, as you know, is about spreading the risk. You know, we take the risk for the hurricanes in Florida, and the California earthquakes, and the tornadoes in the Midwest, and they take, and they spread the risk out by accepting some of what happens on the coast. So, you know, I think that the, it has been spun as, oh, we're protecting these million-dollar mansions, and that's not necessarily the case. There has been some discussion about excluding secondary homes, which I understand, which is far different than a home that has been passed down, that people live in year-round, from family to family. So I think what their action was, was good. It's a good step. I want to obviously see it finalized. Jamie and I did co-sponsor a bill filed by the Speaker and Attorney General Coakley, because on the state level, there's not a lot we can do. So what we decided was, right now, the law states you have to cover on insurance the entire replacement value of your property. Well, if you have a home of $700,000, $800,000, but you only have $150,000 mortgage, you may not, you may want to take that risk of not the replacement. I wouldn't advise it, but you may want to do that if your premium had skyrocketed because of this. So this bill would allow you to only cover the amount of the note versus the amount of the property, if you want. So that bill was, had a hearing, we testified in favor of it. I suspect it will pass, given the strong support. It has bipartisan support, and hopefully get there. And that'll be another tool in the arsenal to help homeowners as we figure out where the water's act is going.
Okay. Well, that's great. Thank you for that. And I read that same editorial, I thought it was too myopic. Yeah. It was trying to address the funding question more than it was trying to solve the people issue that's involved in this, so I agree. Okay. I'll open it up to my colleagues. Any questions, Irma?
Thank you both very much, and thank you for your work on the transportation bond bill. There were a lot of really good amendments in there, and yes, you and, the two of you and Mr. Headland were very busy, because he had 10 amendments that I could find with two of them for Hingham. I was a little disappointed that there was nothing in there for the Summer Street corridor, the 3A work. There was? How did I miss it?
Sure. I don't know about the Senate side. On the House side, it was in.
I missed it.
It was in the House side, because I specifically recalled that, because I know DJ McKinnon and the committee is working on that corridor. I know it's not, from a priority standpoint, I know this board has prioritized some of the other areas which are further along in the design phase, as you should. But no, that's definitely in there. Now, the Senate may not have filed an amendment.
Okay.
Because if, when we put it in on the House side, occasionally the Senate will think we're right and leave it in the bill rather than starting from scratch. So the Senate may not have had to file an amendment on that, but it certainly was in the House.
I'm going to go back and find it, then. And I also appreciate the amendments that were put in there to change, I won't say correct, that's a bad word, to change the language under the Chapter 90 on the five-year plan, and then on the group that, the committee they're putting together to look at the MAPC planning organizations. I think that's critical. I didn't realize how other cities and towns felt about that, but I got a pretty good dose of that at a meeting that I went to. So thank you for those amendments, and thank you for fighting for Chapter 78. We need the circuit breaker.
Okay. Thank you. Paul?
Garrett, quick question. You talked about this opiate abuse strategy. What I'm seeing is that they just aren't enough beds on the sections, and it's very frustrating, because people either end up in Bridgewater or the House of Correction when they need treatment. They don't need incarceration. So what does this really say to that issue?
This says very little to that issue. This is an action plan to address the short-term problem. The long-term problem, the macro problem that you're describing, is one that we are having. It is, comes down to, quite frankly, to a funding issue. And as we come out of the recession, and as I said to somebody the other day, the only way, I've been around now 14 years, I've seen at least two of these. The only way I know is out of one when I was in the next one. And so we're trying to figure out the right time to address that. I mean, you're looking at, it used to be you could go to Bridgewater for 30 days. Now you're there, what, seven days? You might, you might get over if you're lucky.
And you're over at the House.
Then you're, or you're at the House of Correction. If you're lucky, you're over, you can maybe get in the airbase for a couple of weeks beyond that, and hopefully something like the Gavin House or the Hansa House or something opens up, which, by the way, if you've ever visited them, and I have, these are not the Taj Mahals. These are really rundown structures with good people trying to make the most of keeping folks, because the heroin addiction, which really attacked an entire generation, which started with the scourge of anti-commy, and it took us a significant amount of time and really legislative pressure to change the way that those were prescribed. And it started here, and it started in most states, and really spread across the country. Now that is prescribed in a vastly different way. Quite frankly, I don't think the medical community understood the impact of that particular drug. The problem is when they cut that back, and it became so expensive, just flooded, everybody flooded to the next, the next thing, which was the heroin. Which is now, it used to be $20 a bag, you know, it's probably $5 a bag now.
Got to add Percocet to that.
And Percocet as well. So we are thinking about that. I know that the chairman of mental health has been talking to the Speaker about that on the House side. It is a critical issue, trying to find the number of beds, because, you know, if you don't, it's, it's treatment, but it has so many other issues. I mean, there was a case in Hingham Court today of not from Hingham but of surrounding community, next-door neighbor, opiate-addicted kid, trying to break into his neighbor's house just to steal something to go buy drugs. So if you think it doesn't spread out, the vast rash of home breaks in Hingham, I guarantee you, a drug addict's looking for something to steal quickly and sell.
I would agree.
Good. Okay.
One last question. Any, any progress been made or anything new on the rehabbing welfare to get rid of the fraud?
Yeah. The House has taken several initiatives on that. You know, I know that there's always more that we can do. I think right now, we're kind of, that issue is still there, but the whole DCF issue is a larger issue that has really sort of absorbed our energy and our focus. Not that that, the EBT reform, which we've done, which is to limit it, you know, limit what you can buy, where you can buy it, whether you can ship out of state. I mean, those were all really started, quite frankly, by the Speaker of the House and supported by Representative Murphy and myself. The Senator has done very good work on that on the Senate side. So we have made significant progress. There's always more we can do. We've limited the number of replacement cards you can get and when you can get those, and that you have to go in in person if you, if it's after two. And I'm sure I'm misstating a little bit of all the reforms that we've done, but I'm just reminding myself as we speak, well, how many of those issues we've done, and it's really been about a three-year process.
I know you've worked very hard on it.
It's an area that is something that we can always continue to fix and continue to tweak, and I think Stacy Monahan, the Commissioner, has had an action plan which has been somewhat effective, but there's more we can do.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Any questions, since they're here? This is an opportunity for those of you who were very fortunate to have two very capable representatives in.
None for you, Doc Gallo. We're coming Monday night to save all your questions.
Okay. Bob, you have to.
Oh, I forgot that.
Folks at home can't hear anybody from the audience and none of the speakers.
Bob Curley, Chair of Hingham's Community Preservation Commission, One Gristville Lane. Want to thank you for the additional funding that was given to the Community Preservation Coalition throughout the Commonwealth. I'd love to see it happen again next year.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I'm looking at Mr. Hershey. He usually gets me at Starbucks.
He's moved up in my. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Thank you for coming.
Appreciate. Thank you very much, and thank you for your patience. Just, the fire chief just walked into the room and slipped, Garrett, you might be interested, we have a water main break in Crow Point.
Oh, no.
Chief Duff, Bel Air Road.
Don't worry, the recommendation, if I get something, I'll let you know.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Add that to the list.
Roll that into the takeover discussion.
Yeah. Thank you, Garrett. We will. Okay. The next item, we're going to vote a series of budgets, and the, the first budget is the school department budget. We have been given a suggested number through the work of the Advisory Subcommittee is a budget in the amount of $43,490,722. That budget represents a 3.95% increase, and this has been, this is a budget, I should say, that is in, is in consideration of all of the other needs of the other departments and the town on its financial plan moving forward. So I don't know, I see the Advisory Subcommittee Chair here, if she would have any comments, Laura Marwell, if you would like to.
It's not often this thing's lower than me. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
Laura Marwell, Chair of the Education Subcommittee. We unanimously recommended this budget. It is a year-over-year increase of 3.95%. We feel this budget meets the most pressing needs of the school department and continues to chip away at a backlog of needs while preserving resources to meet the needs of the other town departments. Among other things, this budget includes 4.5 new secondary teacher FTEs, funding for the post-secondary planning coordinator, funding for increased transition room tutor hours, increased health aid hours, additional coaches, an additional middle school custodian, funds to bring the outer district coordinator in-house and the ABA specialist in-house, and an additional half a psychologist for the high school. This budget also includes three of the following six requested positions, two adjustment counselors, two additional custodians, and two elementary teachers. The school committee, and we left it up to the school committee and the school administration to prioritize within the available funds. I would like to point out that in our deliberations about this budget, the rate of increase of the regular ed budget was a primary concern to us. The regular ed budget is $2 million greater than last year. That rate is helped, is made possible by a decrease in the special ed budget this year that we don't expect will happen next year. And we did not want to fund the budget to a level that we would not be able to sustain next year. next year. This was a unanimous decision of our Subcommittee, and we hope that you will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Laura, while you're there, if I could just, you know, we just passed along, and I know you discussed a proposal that Laura Burns and Linda Port bought.
Yes.
Dealing with the special ed proposals. So perhaps you'd like to comment on that proposal?
Sure, actually, I would, but I would let Linda Kutch, she's a member of the Ed Subcommittee, and also she is.
Oh, great. Oh, that's, thank you. Thank you, Laura. I'm sorry, Linda, I didn't know you were doing double duty.
It's even lower for me. Linda Kutch, 21 Martins Cove Road. I am the liaison from the Advisory Committee to the SPED funding group. And the Advisory Committee voted 12 to 1. No, I was right, it was unanimous. I'm sorry, I'm getting my Warren articles mixed up. Voted unanimously to support this, and we wholeheartedly think it's a great idea for level fiscal management for the school committee and for the town. Because the town is the one that gets faced with some of these costs. And if they're unexpected and unanticipated and unbudgeted, it can really throw things in. So the Advisory Committee voted unanimously to support this.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Linda. Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion. Irma, you're the.
All right. And I just want to make a comment before we do this. I want to thank Dr. Gallo, the school committee, I see Ray Estes here, and Carol Falve. And if I miss anybody else, I apologize. Oops, Liza O'Reilly, I'm sorry. And Ed Schreier is here. Yep. And also the Advisory Subcommittee headed by Laura Marwell. I've followed this budget deliberations in great detail, and I think it's really a very good budget for, to bring up some of the positions that were lost over the terrible times we had. But, and the one concern I have, and I told Dr. Gallo and Ray that I was going to air this, is that the sustainability of the budget should, over time, should we go back to having the SPED budget come way, way up? It is a concern, but we'll face it as it comes, but I feel I need to put it on the table. So thank you all. Okay.
Could you make the motion?
I would be happy to. I make a motion to recommend a school department budget in the amount of $43,490,722.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good job.
It was a good job. And I have to say, I want to commend the Subcommittee. In my six years on the board, the Subcommittee does such more detailed work than any one of us could do on our own. And to the earlier discussion, you may have heard, is nine work, or 15 works, in this case. And we're very complimentary of that deliberative process, so thank you. Oh, Mr. Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ray Estes, 92 Fort Hill Street, Chair of the School Committee. I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen for their vote tonight, and also thank the Advisory Committee, and particularly the Education Subcommittee and Laura Marwell, its Chair, for their hard work on this budget, and very appreciative of the time and effort that's gone into making what I think is a very fair budget. So thank you.
Well, thank you. That's very nice of you. Thank you very much. Okay. Community planning. Thank you, Jim. Jim, I didn't hear you. Do you want to?
I just looked at it. It's the sweater.
Can we go to jail for that kind of comment? Mr. Alexiades, the community planning department budget, I know, we all know what's in it, but I think if you could just articulate what we've done there for the folks at home, that would be.
Sure. This budget is in front of you tonight for a vote for $646,311 of payroll and $57,857 of expenses, for a total budget of $704,168. And the difference between this budget and the budget I recommended to you is, you are not adding a part-time assistant conservation officer. The proposal from the department was 20 hours out of the tax levy and 15 hours out of wetlands' filing fees. And as we balance the budget, we determined that we just couldn't afford the funds out of the tax levy. And also, there was funds requested for another building inspector. And again, as we looked at the different positions we added to the government, in this budget process, we felt that that was an area that we just couldn't add to in addition to everything else. The effect of that will mean that, you know, there potentially are going to be a slightly longer period of time for building permits. Right now, they're running at about two weeks. I know that the board has set a goal of before 30 days, and Mike feels confident that he can maintain that, but it might stretch a little past the two weeks.
Okay. Very good.
I did tell him that if he saw that changing dramatically, then he would bring that to me immediately, and I would address it with the board.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ted. Any questions from colleagues?
Nope.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Mr.?
That we recommend a community planning department budget of payroll, $646,311, expenses $57,857, totaling $704,168.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, on that, I just wanted to make note for the record, how the board feels about the ability for the Conservation Commission to use wetland filing fees for the 15 hours, that we're not going to be part of the budget anyway. And can they go forward with that?
I'm fine.
Yeah, I am as well. That's fine.
Thank you.
You got that, Sharon, for the record? Thank you. The Assessors Department budget, as you know, we've had some considerable discussion on the makeup of what they had to do and the costs associated with it. I think we now have resolution to those matters.
Correct.
And then for Irma, would you like to make the motion for the Assessors budget?
My pleasure. I make a motion to recommend an Assessors Department budget of payroll, $212,192, expenses $11,587, consulting $114,800, and mapping $6,000.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Health insurance?
Okay, so the budget recommendation that I gave you early in the year is being revised to $6,305,485. That represents a 0% increase over the previous year. I announced at the Department Heads Meeting tonight, earlier, to the employees of the town, that health insurance costs next year are going to be inflating at 0%. So that's the second year in a row with a zero for us. I think that's a good accomplishment for the Mayflower Healthcare Group.
Now, and I know Tom O'Brien may not be listening, but I hope he is. I thank him for that. And that certainly helps us all.
Yeah, how much of the reserves did the Mayflower Group use? Because I remember from my advisory days, they maintained a reserve of 12 million, 12,000.
So the, that's a subject of a meeting that we're going to be having tomorrow, to discuss where the Steering Committee, and I sit on the Steering Committee for the 36 towns that are part of the Mayflower Group, what to do with the reserves that they have, and what level to have. So we're going to bring the conversations that we've had in Hingham, and we all well know for the last decade, to this group that hasn't really talked about financial policies. They're currently retaining approximately 34% of annual expenditures in fund balance. So we all know from here that that's a little too much.
And how much, that's the 12 million?
It's actually 34 million.
Oh, excuse me.
And so, and it represents roughly 34% of annual expenditures, that are about $100 million a year. And so we're going to go through a series of discussions about how much should be in a single-purpose trust fund, which is what this is, the single-purpose fund. You know, we have a reserve fund, and our activities are police, fire, DBW, school, and a variety of other services. This activity is simply healthcare. And so, you know, industry standards talk to numbers in the 20% to 25% range, and we're going to have those discussions. None of the surplus is being used as an allocation towards the fiscal 2015 rate. So we're off of that, so to speak, crutch of using fund balance to support the rate.
Now, and I think the discussion should be, as you say, what is the rate? How much should we have in the bank?
You know, in the past, the county, the Mayflower Healthcare Group has used the surplus to lower the rate. And their concern with that is that it's an artificial lowering. It would be like us using free cash or surplus revenue fund balance to fund the labor contract. You know, what happens next year when, or five additional people to work here? What happens next year when, you know, that surplus revenue isn't there anymore, because it's not a recurring revenue source necessarily? And so that's the issue they're grappling with. I've introduced a topic to them of a holiday, which is an industry term for, leave the rate alone and allow it to inflate, to deal with the ongoing medical inflation, and just provide a one-month holiday from rates. So you don't ask the employees to pay, or the employer to pay into the fund for a one-month period. And that has a way of lowering your fund balance, putting money back where it belongs in the employee's pocket, or in the employer's pocket, whatever proportion that it came out of, and keep reserves at a respectable amount. The reserves in that fund are designed to mitigate against wide swings in medical inflation. And so, back when we had a fund like that in the mid-'90s, we had amounts in the 20% to 24% range. We saw a 24% fund balance get wiped away in three years. So large amounts are important, because medical inflation can move, and then it's hard to recover from that.
Okay. Thank you for that good explanation. Okay, unemployment budget, Ted. I think the issue here is just how much should we?
We haven't voted yet.
We haven't voted it yet.
Health insurance.
Health insurance, I'm sorry. I checked it off. Go ahead, Irma.
All right. I'll make a motion to recommend a health insurance budget of $6,305,485.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I shouldn't check before we vote. Don't do it. The unemployment budget, I think our experience there is a good one, in the sense that we don't have any planned layoffs, and that's the good news. We're running a good ship, therefore, the benefit of that is you don't have to pay as much in unemployment if you, and so this is a reduction. So is that?
Yep, it's a reduction from 50,000 to 30. Every unemployment case that we have presently will have expired before the end of the fiscal year, will not carry forward next year. So presently, we have no active cases. We will have a case next year. We've had one every single year, but there's no justification for a number above 30 right now.
Okay. Mr. Healy?
I'll move that we recommend an unemployment budget of $30,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Medicare, Ted, any comments on that?
We've lowered this to a 0% increase. It's reflective of last year. We had built in a 10% increase, which is a standard budget practice that we've had. Ultimately, 100% of your payroll will be affected, will be required to be, charged the 1.45% employer's share of Medicare tax. Right now, any employee hired before January 1 of 1986 is exempt from that provision, as is the employer. And as you can expect, we don't have that many employees that are here from prior to 1986. The list is getting smaller.
Okay, very good. Okay, Irma?
Okay, I make a motion to recommend a Medicare budget of $714,420.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next item has to deal with the dispatch budget, and let me, we've had a couple of discussions on this subject over the last few months, and I thought, Ted, your comments of, I believe it was last week, when we had to do a reserve fund transfer for dispatch, were very clear. We are in a new world, and I think Chief Parino very rightly professed that in this new world, we have better data, enabling us to respond more quickly. As with any new enterprise, there are startup issues, and we have been dealing with those startup issues. But also, we have a mechanism in place that is collaborative, and requires cooperation between four towns to work. And while we are the largest recipients of those benefits I just described, the fact of the matter is that we need, all four of us, to agree to the way it's going to work. And so the dispatch budget for the moment is, we're going to be voting a number that's about 11% higher than what it was last year. As we go through these growing pains, there is more work to be done. Unfortunately, as we all heard, the person who had been with this, Hal Wallace, passed away, and he was the one who knew a lot about the mechanics of this. We have more work to recapture and do. So I'm happy to support, as we continue this collaborative effort. It's been a learning experience for all the towns, and I think the recommended motion is a good one, to get us to where we need to be. So, Mr. Healy, any comments or?
Can I just add a couple of items? I know you're brief, but I said some things at Advisory that I need to let you guys know. I'm still recommending that you leave the 750 here as the budget. The region voted an assessment that will effectively be 775 to us, and it voted it just yesterday. I didn't have a chance to update you or Advisory from that number, so that's why I'm going to leave the lower number by 25,000 in it, and I'll work to find that money elsewhere in the budget process. I will report that the other three communities agreed to share equally, and not per the formula, the cost of moving back to computer software to run the computer-rated dispatch. And so I was, I'm really buoyed by that, that the three communities, besides Hingham, realized that this is a fair way to handle that.
Is that in there?
It is.
Yeah, the issue that Ted is addressing has to do with the software communications that was originally voted in the original design, and Hingham, to the credit of both our police and fire chief, tried to make it work.
Did make it work.
And they did.
Did make it work. I'm sorry.
Don't, don't, don't. Ted, I'm not being critical.
You know that. I got a shout-out from Mike and Mark. They worked hard on that.
They worked, I know they did. And unfortunately, the computer design that is moving in the future is different than the one that was originally proposed, so that is what Ted was just referring, in the fact that they've agreed to change the formula to share it in a different way. So that's a help to us, but it means to Mike, and to our chief, and to Mark, that means they have to go back and teach other people to do it again. And so that's a cost to us, so I appreciate that. So I'll entertain a motion on the dispatch budget.
I'll move that we recommend a dispatch budget of $750,000.
Second.
I see capital people here, so I know we're next on capital. As you heard of, I thought Ray Eisenbees and Company did a wonderful job of dealing with the capital program, trying to make up for those past decisions where money didn't permit development. And the question became, we moved this budget a considerable amount from $1,008,000 to over $2,002,000, and that's to prepare us for the future. And that's the best part of this. Capital gets you benefits down the road. However, how do we pay for it, was the concern, and I think Ted has found a way to do that. So in the motion, you'll hear where the money is coming from, and the bulk of the money will come from the tax levy, $2 million, and the rest will come from fund balance, and also from a fund balance designated for mooring permits. So with that explanation, unless there's anything anybody would like to add?
No.
Okay. Let's see, Paul?
Sure. I'd like to commend the Capital Outlay Committee. I thought the explanation was excellent. I'd recommend that we move to recommend a capital budget of $2,286,922 to be funded as follows. $2 million from the tax levy, and $214,922 from fund balance, and $72,000 from fund balance designated by four mooring permits.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Good, thank you. Okay, any other questions on the budget, or comments? All right, we're now moving along to the Warren articles, and we have a number of those. I think, Roger, maybe in the interest, if you would mind coming up, and we'll talk about, before we get to the Warren article itself, we could talk about the.
We accept for Bearcove Park.
We're going to talk about the street acceptance for Bearcove Park.
Given to me by the friends, our friends at the Bearcove Park Committee. I appreciate that, thank you.
I still like the address. I commented on that earlier today.
Before we start.
I did not miss that. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm coming before the board today, seeking your approval to lay out for acceptance Bearcove Park Drive, the plan of which is behind me. The intent here is to be able to add Bearcove Park Drive to our existing roadway inventory, and by doing so, we can then increase our Chapter 90 funding. So the road, as it stands, is a town way, as, again, hasn't been formally accepted. So we already own it, we already maintain it. It was built as part of the DPW complex project. The proposed plan would extend from Fort Hill Street all the way to the entrance to Bearcove Park. The layout of the road itself is consistent with what would be a planning board, minor road, 40 feet wide. A cul-de-sac is shown at the end of the road to accommodate emergency vehicles like the Quint. Although that cul-de-sac doesn't exist now, the layout is such that if we needed to build when it's ready to go. I did go before the planning board, and received unanimous support for the acceptance of the road, as is required statutorily, as part of the street acceptance process. And with your support, we'll get this to Tom meeting, and we'll immediately add that to our inventory.
Questions?
A couple of questions. And Roger, one was already answered for me, but just for the people that are listening. It goes from Fort Hill Street all the way up. It goes from Fort Hill Street all the way up to... Where do we consider the entrance to Bear Cove Park? Because I thought it was the gravel parking lot by the Fire Museum and the Train Club.
Uh-huh. Well, this extends a little further. It's about 2,700 feet, and it extends just... In this case, I think it would be just south of the actual gate located at the entrance of Bear Cove Park itself. We know where the folks go in and walk the dogs.
Right. Are you going to have to redo the parking lot to bring it up to spec?
No, because we already... So, if it was a traditional road acceptance and the town was taking on a road constructed by a developer, you'd want to see that it was brought up to a standard because we then take ownership and the liabilities associated with that, meaning if the road was built to a substandard, then it's... The burden of fixing it in the future falls on us. This already belongs to us, so the last section that you just described, Ms. Louder, is not built to standard, and some of it is gravel. But, again, we already own it, and with that, it just makes sense to try to get as much as we can to increase our Chapter 90 funding. And incidentally, it might mean, depending on what happens with, as you know, with the bill and how much money we get, whether it's 200 million or 300 million, the... Not just for Hingham, incidentally, that's for the entire Commonwealth.
It's too bad. We could use the 300 million.
There's that bridge.
Yeah.
But it could mean 3,000 to 5,000 annually that we don't receive now.
And one other question. I went and pulled out all of my DPW papers that I still have, which is frightening, and when the road was constructed, there were two areas of drainage that were in question. One's been fixed. There was one up by Thomas Auto Body, and that one Randy fixed a year ago or so.
Yep.
Wasn't there one further on where there was a question whether you were... Not you personally. Whether the road needed to be regraded because it was... Because I had notes on this, that it was draining into Tucker Swamp versus away from Tucker Swamp.
Yep. You're referring to... So, there was an existing condition that had a square.
Okay.
You can see it there, but yeah. There was an existing condition that...
I thought it looked fine, Paul. That tells you how I am on directions.
Yeah, the real plan, huh? That discharged off the road into Tucker Swamp.
Yep.
So, prior to the construction of the road and the project overall, a lot more discharged into Tucker Swamp. The site now has a humongous detention pond.
Don't we know it? That used to be a ball field.
Some catch basins. And I am talking to Abby to see if there's something we can do that might help that even further, that existing location that you're talking about, a plunge pool or something along those lines. But I submit to you that it's a vast improvement over what was there before.
So, there's no real issues with this?
Not as far as I'm concerned, no.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Hershey?
There is a problem with that. There's a big problem with that, okay? Because that water's not supposed to flow off that road and go into the swamp. Yeah. If you go down there in a rainstorm, you can see it just flowing right in there. It's supposed to go in a catch basin, then go to retention pond, and then go into Tucker Swamp. That's the way it's supposed to be laid out. That there... The whole complex of the DPW and the road, there's not a professional stamp on that plan, okay? It hasn't been professionally stamped. It's supposed to be.
Okay. So, let me answer each one of those. The first is that there's never part of the plan to install a catch basin at that location. Let me answer your question. This way, you can understand what I mean. So, the catch basin was never planned to go at that location. The plans that you have, they certainly were stamped, and they certainly were filed. You might not have seen those as part of the planning board permitting process, which was very extensive. If you had, you know, if anyone was here during that time, it did not lack the kind of scrutiny that a traditional project would have. For that matter, I would submit to you that it went over even more extensive review by the relative boards. This, what we're suggesting here, does not prevent the water from going. If there's a concern about water going somewhere, the acceptance of this road doesn't change that. This only means that we're going to be able to add that to... This road to our inventory and increase the money that goes to the roads in the town of Hingham in its entirety, not just at this location. So, if there's a question about drainage, I think that that's something that we should take up as a separate matter and not necessarily has... Doesn't necessarily have anything to do with what we're recommending today.
The pitch on the road, when it was designed, the pitch is going into the swamp. The pitch is supposed to be the other way, so it takes time to go in the swamp. That's one issue. The other issue is, on the 24th of September, the DPW constructed this catch basin on Bear Cove Park.
John, you have to go back to the microphone, please.
Constructed the... This catch basin on Bear Cove Park Drive right here, and the purpose of it was to take the water out of that area, and it dissipated from that area. Okay? And here it is. Of course, they're working there again. I'll be real brief on this here. I was there when they did all this. Okay? Here we are again. I was there. Just bear with me here. Okay? This is the construction. They're getting it out.
Okay.
Again, now, this is what we have today. This has taken 225. Okay? That's what we have today. Okay? That there is all the water. I've never seen that they're flooded as much, okay? The water now is not flowing. Before that there was done, before the road was constructed, the road has been raised up. There was always a flow there. It always went under the road and across, and it went down into the river eventually. That's what it originally did. Now, it doesn't flow because when they put the catch basin in, the pipe that's there is like this now, and the catch basin was put on top of it, okay? It doesn't flow.
Okay. John, I'm going to have to ask you. The issue is acceptance of the road. I'm not questioning what you're saying in terms of the flooding that's there, but I think Roger's point was, we'd be happy to discuss this. We'll put it on an agenda item at some future point to see how do we fix it, but the acceptance of the road is the question at hand, and that's what we're going to deal with. I'm very happy to... I appreciate the comments on this, but we're trying to fix what...
Fixed? That's a very good word because I don't believe it's going to be fixed. This is accepted, okay? That's...
So, what happens to it if we don't accept it?
Well, I mean, you're putting a burden on this poor guy's property.
Didn't Randy fix that?
He already owned the road.
That's the one that...
He already owned the road. This just formalizes something with the state that increases...
Are you willing to talk about this in the future?
Yes.
As far as the meeting goes and get this here straightened away? Because this guy has never had flooding, and now he has rats in the back of his house on hillside terrace caused by the town not taking the water from his property.
I'll be happy to... I'll ask Roger to take this back under advisement, and he'll come back, and we'll have another session on this.
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Hershey says, I do not agree with the position...
I understand.
Of course, you don't.
Well, I just... It just implies that we're going to talk about it.
John, thank you for bringing to our attention. We'll talk about it at some future debate, okay?
That's on the record. Thank you very much.
And I do know that Roger and Randy fixed one.
Okay. We're not going to talk about it. We're trying to... The issue at hand is we're dealing with a street acceptance. If there's a problem, we'll deal with the problem.
Yes. Thank you.
So...
Do you want me to make a motion?
Would you?
Sure. I'll make a motion to recommend that the town accept the layout as a townway of a way beginning at the intersection with Fort Hill Street, extending approximately 2,960 feet more or less in a northwesterly direction to the gate at Bear Cove Park as shown on a plan entitled, in quotes, "as built Plan Bear Cove Park Drive," close quotes, "prepared by C.H.A. Consulting, Incorporated, dated February 28, 2014, as revised from time to time," and that the name Bear Cove Park Drive be given said way.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Roger, you have some contracts you would like to...
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Three contracts, and these are actual contract extensions. So, these are contracts that you have already approved, and this just allows us to maintain the existing pricing associated with the contracts and move forward with those same contractors into next year. Those include pavement markings, what we use to stripe the roads, earth materials with G. Lopes Construction... I'm sorry. Pavement markings with Markings Inc. out of Pembroke, earth materials specifically ordinary burrow with G. Lopes Construction Inc. out of Taunton, Mass., earth materials, gravel, slum, burrow, reclaimed concrete, burrow, sand and stone, and that's with T.L. Edwards Inc. out of Avon, Mass. These bids are bid out traditionally through the consortium, and, again, these are contract extensions. We estimate that the first contract value is about 60,000 to 65,000, and the second to us are really contingent upon the amount of material we need during the season, and that includes sand for snow and ice operations, but also construction-related projects. But we don't anticipate that those would be over $10,000 respectively.
Okay. Any questions on the contracts?
Nope. Consortium does well.
Okay. Paul?
I'll make a motion that we sign the contract extension with Markings Inc. for item number six, pavement markings. This extension is valid through the contract extension period ending December 31, 2014.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Irma?
I'd make a motion to sign the contract extension with G. Lopes Construction, Incorporated, for item number 10C, FOB, south, earth materials. This extension is valid through the contract extension period ending December 31, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And Paul, if you could do the last one on T.L. Edwards?
A vote that we sign the contract extension with T.L. Edwards, Inc. for items number 10A, B, D, E, F, delivered south, earth materials, gravels, loan, burrow, ordinary burrow, sand and stone. This extension is valid through the contract extension period ending December 31, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. As we continue in the warrants, there's one step I need to take. Betty, if you would be so kind, we're going to take a motion to open the warrant, so maybe you could... For the folks at home, so they understand the articles we're adding to the warrant, would be if you could tell us that the... I have some of them. I don't have all of them.
Article LL is that the town reallocate, transfer, and appropriate the funds previously appropriated by the vote under Article 13 of the warrant for the 2013 annual town meeting to the Mills Tax Stabilization Fund.
Right.
Article MM is will the town reallocate, transfer, and/or appropriate the funds previously appropriated under the vote under Article 14 of the warrant for the 2013 annual town meeting as follows. $450,000 for purpose of reducing the 2015 tax rate and the balance of $193,120 to remain in the Mills Tax Stabilization Fund for future tax rate reduction. Article NN is will the town amend the vote under Article 34 of the 2010 annual town meeting in order to designate the Mills tax revenue generated under Mass. General Law, Chapter 64L, Section 2, as a local receipt available to reduce the tax rate and to reduce... And to transfer and/or appropriate the sum of $600,000 in the upcoming fiscal year to reduce the fiscal '15 tax rate or after anything relating there, too. Those three deal with the tax plan.
And there are two other articles. I don't know if you want me to do them now? No, you don't have to. And the others, we've done. Okay. So, we're going to... Because of some activities that we've got to do, and there's been discussion, and we'll have more discussion as the evening progresses, but we need to officially open the warrant so that we can put it on the warrant for this April's town meeting.
Okay.
So, would you, Irma?
Certainly. I make a motion to open the warrant for the 2014 annual town meeting to insert Articles LL, MM, NN, OO, PP, and QQ, and to close the warrant for the 2014 annual town meeting.
Second. Okay. That means this is it. There aren't any other warrants. Once this is closed, that's it. I know. I know.
Never say never, Bruce.
I'm saying that...
Don't jinx us.
I'm saying that on behalf of the chairman of the advisory committee. Who is...
Before you take that vote...
Wait, wait.
Yeah.
I just noticed a missing article there, and that is Article Z, which is the noise bylaw, which you've spoken about frequently.
Oh, my God.
But was never actually included in the warrant.
Okay. I'll amend my motion to include... See? He says never. We're then. I'll amend the motion I just made to include Article Z.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? Are we sure? That's it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we can get to Article Z, the noise bylaw. There's been considerable discussion, and I see Declan has been here patiently. Declan Boland, the chair of the committee. Declan, would you like to come up? There's any additional comments you'd like to make for the public before we vote the article? This is... And thank you.
Declan Boland, 338 Main Street, and chair of the noise bylaw committee. I really don't have any really additional comments. It's been quite a journey, and we've watched this, and... But basically, I would make one general comment. I think this is a good bylaw. There's different opinions on it in terms of it should be in place or not, but what essentially, though, it comes down to is that we think it's a fair and it supports the well-being of people in the town. And the one thing we went through several times in this is saying that this is a draft bylaw, and it's now submitted, and then it'll be a working bylaw that allows for amendments in the future. Hopefully, there won't be any. That's what we think. We've submitted a good one.
Okay.
So, thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you, Declan, for your work, and Dennis and others. I know there's been considerable discussion about this, and the liaison from the advisory committee, Michael Barkley, is in the room, and Michael just wanted to be sure in his conversations that the law passed muster, and it satisfied the needs of our police chief, who has told me and Michael, and I'm sure each of you, that this law is a step in the right direction. It gives him additional tools, and it gives him additional definitions that help him enforce the solitude of the town. So, I thank you all for the work and that you have to do. If there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Healy?
Sure. I'll move that we recommend favorable action on Article Z, the noise bylaw.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And can I ask you all to lobby with people and engage people in conversation on this bylaw? Because it is still not exactly understood that the criticality of the law is to give the police what they need to enforce construction, commercial landscaping, and your dump pickup... That's probably not the right words, but the garbage pickup that comes in the early morning hours. Those are the three critical things in that bill. So, if you could lobby people as you engage them in conversation, that would be a good thing.
Just not before 7:00 AM.
Not before 7:00 AM. Not before 7:00 or after 8:00, right? Okay. Thank you for that. All right. Now, we're going to get to my favorite subject, tax relief. Now we're going to get to my favorite subject, tax relief. Mr. Alexiades, perhaps you could, I know you did this at the Town Forum on Sunday, and I thank you for the good job you did. This is the, this is Chapter 2 in the education lesson on how do we make tax relief happen. Bob, can you get this?
Do you want me to go through the presentation at the open forum?
Just briefly? Can you, I think, I think the way you did it, yeah, what I heard, Ted, unfortunately, the microphone didn't pick up your comments in their entirety at the forum, and I heard that from some people who were watching us, so.
Can you hear me?
Try to come closer to the microphone. You're looking at the schedule that was presented at the town meeting forum on Sunday. And this schedule is, this graph depicts the town's excluded debt. Excluded debt are debt issues that were voted by the general public in an annual election to allow the town to exclude the debt service costs, the principal interest payments on those bonds for those projects, above and beyond the constraints of Proposition 2.5, so an additional amount of taxation. And the projects, the most recent of which was the middle school, are right at this level right now in fiscal 2014. So your current tax bills are about $3.5 million, $3.6 million higher for the debt service. In 2015, it's scheduled to go up to $5.755 million. And then it'll begin its slow journey down till the loans are eventually paid off. The tax relief proposals, which are included on the next page, the first proposal is to utilize the excluded, the Mills Tax Revenue that we get on an annual basis, the $600,000 that the Board just discussed and voted, or voted to include on the warrant. The $600,000 allows us to drop an equal amount, and you could see that equal amount reflected through this, pretty much the entire level of the term of the note. And that essentially drops it down to $5.2 million at the peak year, right here. The next portion of tax relief includes the additional amounts that we've been reserving since we've been collecting the Mills Tax in 2011. So revenues from a partial year in '11, complete year '12, complete year '13. And those revenues, which are sitting in fund balance or in the stabilization fund, reflected here, would allow us to, I think it's approximately $1.9 million. We can't spread it out over the whole term of the loan. What we tried to do is allow it to drop the increase to a point where, or this increase right here, to a point where it would never go back above it, and then slowly begin its line down. So what we don't want to do is take all that money and dump it into the first year. That'll cause the tax rate possibly to fall. But I know that falling tax rates sound odd, that we don't want that. But what we don't want is a falling tax rate that the following year is just going to go right back up. And that bouncing effect is very detrimental for our businesses, because they plan their economic process. But of course, for taxpayers, too. It's a very unsettling event to see rates go up and down in that fashion. And so that's what we've done with that portion of it. And then the last portion is the amount of operating revenues that are included in the fiscal 2015 budget in the creation of unused levy capacity. And that represents, is represented by the black line, which drops it another, in this case, $400,000 for fiscal 2015. But our forecasts in the out years show that we're going to try to allocate half a million dollars, and that creates that gap furthering down from the red line above it, which brings it down to a net of about $4.2 million from a high of $5.7. And that's a substantial decrease of override taxes.
Now, that, thank you, Ted. You made it simple. So the, what we're trying to do is, one, use those three tools to give some tax relief over the long term. And it does it initially, and then it continues to drop through that use. The one question that has come up is, what about the future? Suppose tomorrow, state revenue, you know, this year we got a flat increase in general government money. Suppose something different should happen that caused that to change? The beauty of this plan is it would allow us to pause or stop if we needed to do so. But it sets us on a course of action to use the monies, if things turn out the way our plans, to reduce the burden of taxes, which is a very considerable issue for many of our citizens. And as we said Sunday, we have plans in place to deal with those citizens who are in need. And in fact, each year, we take $20,000 out of the Mills Tax.
Above and beyond.
Above and beyond. To reduce those, to reduce the burdens on those people who are most needy. This gives us benefit to all of the citizens. And that is important to me, and has been for me, and this is a way to do that. So I don't know if anybody has any other comments?
I would just like to add, because I hear this a lot from folks, this is a tax relief proposal. Property taxes are not going down. They're going up at a slower rate. And what we're really trying to do here is bend the curve. So, and that's essentially the reverse here, you could see, of us bending the curve. We know the taxes have been steadily increasing, and we're trying to lessen that. It sounds small, but 1% or 2% spread out evenly, or 1% or 2% every year, when you start looking at it in the term of decades or several decades, is substantial. And you can't get to it. I mean, if people hope to see a 10% or 15% property tax reduction, that's just not realistic without degradating services beyond the level that I think most people would accept. So our approach here is to do this gradually over a period of years, and hopefully create a better economic environment for those who can't afford.
And I think so. And it helps everybody as well, because we all pay into that number. And there were 7,600 houses that pay taxes into that tax levy, and those are the people we want to make sure receive the benefit of this kind of thinking. So I applaud Ted and Sue Nickerson, among others, who worked hard at trying to develop a plan that allowed us to respond at our current service levels, but also afforded the opportunity to give a reduction to the folks who pay our salaries, not the one, not yours and mine, and everybody else's. So. Open up, any questions or comments about this? Yes. Sure.
Just one comment suggestion. This is great. Maybe an additional slide or two. These are big numbers. Maybe if you had an example of what would happen to a homeowner and to a business owner, you know, if you're paying $6,000 now.
I got it. Advisory actually asked me the exact same question yesterday. And I had to quickly on my phone come up with a percentage increase, and I think we said it was about 1.3%. But I'm going to come up with the exact percentage, because virtually every person I run into asks me the same question. So I will have that for you.
Sure. Mr. Watson?
June 1, 291 Watson Street. I'm just puzzled. What is unused levy capacity? That sounds like a tax being collected. But I guess it isn't.
I'll explain unused levy capacity. So the town is entitled to raise, and actually, I can go back a few sheets here. Oh, right here. This is the town's forecast for the current year and for the outgoing. And this middle column here represents our budget for fiscal '15 that the selectmen have just finished adopting. Our total tax levy is $73,515,382. The town is entitled to raise, through taxation among its roughly 8,000 parcels, that amount. It's not mandated by law to do that. The town can choose to not raise $73,515,000. This year, they're choosing to raise, actually, let me restate that. This year, they're choosing to raise $400,000 than they're entitled to. That's the discussion the selectmen are having. That's the proposal in front of them. I misspoke a second ago. In fact, the levy that we're allowed to have this year is approximately $400,000 higher than this number. So the town is entitled to send out tax bills totaling $73,915,000. And it's choosing to do less. That less is considered unused levy capacity.
But it's taken unused.
It's unused, because we're not going to use it. However, and this is a key point that the Advisory Committee's taking up, and I gave them a recommendation, which I'll give this Board, that if you begin to do this, and this budget, all of these budgets include this. So these tax levy numbers here have all been reduced by the $400,015 and $500,000 in each of the successive years. The $400,000 for this year, if I can just use that as an explanation, once the selectmen vote the tax rate and do not include that 400 in taxation and create that unused levy capacity, they can never tax the property owners for that particular $400,000 in that year ever again. That money's gone. However, the following year, in fiscal '16, not only do they not have to create more unused levy capacity, but they also can recapture the unused levy capacity from the previous year. They can use it. So they created unused capacity. They were allowed to tax to $75 million. They only did it to $74 million. So they saved a million that they could use in a future year. The problem that occurs is that as you keep stacking up these half a million dollar numbers, and at the end of the forecast year, you're at $2.4 million. In one year, the town of Hingham, through the Selectment Advisory and Town Meeting, could essentially raise taxes by 2.4 million in one year, in 2017. Or 2019, actually, they could raise taxes by that 2.4 million. And so that's going to create some need to, I think, put some financial policies in place that will address, one, you do things like that, and when you don't, and for what purpose. Because one of the things that I've seen in my career in municipal government is that needs and wants will always bubble up. And if there's a pool of money here, communities over the years, and not necessarily Hingham, but across the Commonwealth, have shown an inability to say no to those wants or needs or however you want to classify it. And essentially, we're having the conversation that the state had in 1980 and '81, because this is the reverse of Proposition 2.5. The reason we have Proposition 2.5 is collectively, the taxpayers said to all local governments, you know, the model that you had before, where you figured out how much you needed, and then you raised it through taxation with no constraints, didn't work. And taxes were going up much faster than 2.5%. And so now we have a constraint, a cap at 2.5%. If we create this levy capacity, you know, it's available in the future. And I think Hingham has always shown a great discipline with its finance, and I'm encouraging Advisory and Selectmen to delve into developing financial policies to manage this new thing that you haven't really had in, well, actually, ever, I guess, because you'd only have unused levy capacities since 1981, and you didn't have any, haven't had any since, so none prior. So it's a new thing. And like everything new in Hingham, we like to examine it and try to understand it and make sure we have the right policies going forward.
All right. Irma has a question?
Ted, this is significant, that we're able to do this. It's a little bit complicated for the average person. Any thought given to an underwrite?
You know, I'll address all three. It is an enormously significant event, very rarely has, although you will start to see communities within Massachusetts start building unused levy capacity as the economy increases. Hingham's philosophy has never been to have it. So that's, you know, it's new here. The issue of an underwrite is where you actually permanently lower the levy. So as we're creating this unused levy capacity, this plan goes into fruition. At the end of '15, you'll have $400,000. At '16, you'll have, you'll be adding half a million dollar increments. You can get to a point, let's say at the end of the forecast process, but it could happen anytime, where you would say, we have $2.5 million of unused levy capacity. We don't want to run the risk that a future town meeting will vote to increase taxes by that full amount. So we will ask the voters to permanently lower the levy limit by that amount, and therefore, that unused levy capacity is now gone, and the tax has been permanently lowered to that amount. They're very rare events. They've occurred, actually, I only know one since Proposition 2.5 in the town of Plymouth, which dealt, I believe, with the Pilgrim Nuclear Power Plant, and that taxation issue coming off the books. So, but it is possible, and it would require a general election. It'd be the exact opposite of an override. So you go to the polls, and instead of voting an override, you vote an underwrite.
But, so I think the advantage of this plan is we could pause if some unknown event came along where your forecast says, now, this year, I can't use that $500,000.
Correct. It's an annual decision.
It's an annual decision. So it gives us that flexibility, and that's the beauty of the plan. It works on an assumption. The assumption is that we will have $500,000 every year hereafter in unused capacity. And that assumes that the other parts of the forecast, in terms of property values and other things, occur in the way we think they do. So that's why I like it. It gives us that flexibility. But it allows us to plan, to give people some relief over a longer term, and yet it gives us the flexibility for the unknown, which is, as we all know, is the biggest part of government management. That's how you get, those are the issues that get in your way. So. Any other questions or comments? I thank you for the suggestion on putting up the charts, and that's why we like to have you folks here. You give us those ideas. That's good. All right. We have a series of articles that put into words what Ted, what just said. So there's a series of steps that we have to go through.
Will you do the first one?
If you would, Irma, be so kind.
Okay. I'd make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article L to appropriate the sum of $176,629 from the Stabilization Fund for the purpose of reducing the fiscal year 2015 tax rate.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Paul?
A move that we recommend favorable action on Article LL to reallocate and transfer the funds previously appropriated by the vote under Article 13 of the warrant for the 2013 Annual Town Meeting to the Mills Tax Stabilization Fund.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Irma?
Make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article MM to reallocate, transfer, and/or appropriate the funds previously appropriated by the vote under Article 14 of the warrant for the 2013 Annual Town Meeting as follows. $450,000 for the purpose of reducing the 2015 tax rate, and the balance of $193,120 to remain in the Mills Tax Stabilization Fund for future tax rate reduction.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A move to recommend that the town amend the vote under Article 34 of the 2010 Annual Town Meeting in order to designate the Mills Tax Revenue generated under General Law, Chapter 64L, Section 2, as a local receipt available to reduce the tax rate and to appropriate the sum of $600,000 in the upcoming fiscal year to reduce the FY '15 tax rate.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, Ted. And thank you for the suggestion. All right. The last, second last warrant article deals with the insurance recovery.
Okay. We had a couple of large insurance recoveries this year, damages in a couple of areas, in the school department and in the country club. State law requires that any insurance recovery in excess of $20,000 be placed into a fund and appropriated only by town meeting. So essentially, the purpose of this legislation and the law is that, you know, if a large municipal building, that's how it was contemplated, if town hall burned down, for example, you just don't want to allow the existing outside-of-town-meeting government to be able to rebuild it with insurance proceeds. You want to, the legislature wants that to go back to town meeting. And so that's what we're doing here. In this case, we had damage in the school department, and we had both damages to the roof and to the Foster School boiler. I don't know if there is someone here from the school to talk about the damages particularly. The roof is, again, the roof, it's the middle school roof from several years ago, and they have some residual in that. And then there was significant damage in the country club to the tune of $36,000 for a break of a sprinkler system in the main clubhouse area.
Okay. Any questions?
I'm good.
Questions from the public? Okay. Let's see. Irma?
It's my turn? Okay. Make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article OO to transfer a sum of money from the receipts reserved for appropriation, insurance recovery in excess of $20,000 to the following town departments/committees for use as follows. $28,000 to the school department for use by the school department for repair of the Foster School boiler. $1,800 to the school department for use by the school department for inspection of the middle school roof. $36,934 to the country club. $36,934 to the country club management committee for use by the country club management committee for repair of damage due to a sprinkler break.
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We're at the, at the end of our warrant article discussions, and it has to do with a number of issues on the Community Preservation Commission project. These have been thoroughly vetted at various meetings. I thank the CPC for the work that they've done on this issue. We, I, we have, the issue before us tonight is to vote on each individual project. So, I know there are a number of, maybe some discussions, so we're going to go through them, project by project, unless somebody has new information. If there's no new information, I think we could start with the first article. And Paul?
Sure. A move to recommend $49,421 from the Community Preservation General Reserve for addition to the Community Preservation Committee's Administrative Fund.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye. I move to recommend $175,000 from the Community Preservation Community Housing Reserve to be used by Hingham Affordable Housing Trust for drafting and design services related to the Selectman's parcel development.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to recommend $175,000 from the Community Preservation Community Housing Reserve to be used by Hingham Affordable Housing Trust for the HHT Opportunity Funding Program.
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor? Aye. Irma?
I make a motion to recommend $35,000 from the Community Preservation General Reserve to be used by the Hingham Historical Archives Task Force for implementing the Hingham Historical Collections Master Plan.
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor? Aye.
Move to recommend $30,000 from the Community Preservation General Reserve to be used by the Hingham Cemetery Corporation for Historic Preservation and Restoration of the Ames Chapel located on Map 61/Lot 40 in the Hingham Cemetery.
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor? Aye.
Make a motion to recommend $10,000 from the Community Preservation General Reserve to be used by Second Parish Church Association for Historic Preservation and Development of Plans for the Second Parish Handicap Access Project.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
I will move to recommend $98,049 from the Community Preservation General Reserve to be used by the Hingham Girl Scouts of America for Historic Preservation and Restoration of the Girl Scout House located on Map 80/Lot 89 at 26 Burr Road.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to recommend $150,000 from the Community Preservation General Reserve to be used by Old Colony Building Association to replace the existing leaking roof with a slate roof, both to restore the original historic appearance of the Old Colony Lodge and to preserve the building located at 85 Central Street.
I'm not voting on this. I'm abstaining.
I vote no.
And obviously, I would vote yes, so motion fails. And I'd like to be recorded in the minutes that I will speak to this at town meeting.
We can do that on...
I think I can.
Yeah, we can do that. Mr., when we assemble here on that Sunday?
Well, I want it in the minutes that I'm going to do that.
Okay.
If I, Mr. Chair, if I just... The reason that I'm abstaining is that I am a member of that lodge, and it would be inappropriate for me to vote.
Okay.
Chairman, may I speak on that issue?
Come up.
Dana Baxter, 57 Elton Street, and a member of Old Colony Lodge. Mr. Rabofo, you noticed that you voted in the negative on that. I would like you to explain, if you possibly could, your reasons behind that.
Surely. I'd be happy to. I think the proportions on the, of the amount were too much picked up by the town and not enough by the community, the Old Colony Association.
You voted positive on the Girl Scout...
Yes, I did, and I voted positive on the Boy Scout. In this case, I voted no.
The percentages for the Girl Scout House compared to the percentages on the Old Colony Lodge, the Girl Scout House is 75 percent. Old Colony Lodge is only 65.
I still vote the way I voted.
I'd just like to make my objections to your vote.
That's certainly so recorded. Open space is the next one. See, Irma?
I make a motion to recommend $38,500 from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve for deposit to the town's Conservation Fund for purchase of land, conservation restrictions for prior CPC land acquisitions, capital improvements, and expenses related to such acquisitions, to make deposits or down payments towards acquisitions or creation of such interest in open space or otherwise preserve open space.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see. Paul?
I'd recommend that we move to support $50,000 from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve to be used by the Community Planning Department for a comprehensive trails plan.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to recommend $38,213 from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve and $6,287 from the Community Preservation General Reserve to be used by the Hingham Conservation Commission to purchase the land and interest totaling 6.31 acres from Boy Scout Troop 4 located in Liberty Pole Neighborhood at Map 167.0, Lot 49.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we not recommend $207,500 from the Community Preservation...
That's, that's dropped out. That's, that's, that's gone.
Was that withdrawn?
Yeah.
173,103.
Yeah.
Yes, that's withdrawn. It's gone.
Yeah.
Move down to number 13. That's your next one.
I'd recommend $40,000 from the Community Preservation General Reserve for revised total construction cost of the Whitney Walk Bridge.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Move to recommend $100,000 from the Community Preservation General Reserve to be used by the Bathing Beach Trustees for the Bathing Beach Stabilization Project.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next one has to do with the barn. Yes?
I believe I do have some new information on that.
Okay. If you would.
Good evening again. Bob Curley, one Grisbane Lane, Chair of the Community Preservation Commission. And I think I have two pieces of new information. One is that one of the concerns that was raised with this project concerning the historic headhouse, or barn, as the Recreation Commission refers to it, is that there was some concern about the reaction of the neighbors. And the Recreation Commission did have an open meeting with the neighbors and received unanimous support for this project from the neighborhood. There may be members of, I don't know if Mark is here tonight, but I know I spoke with Vicky Donlin this morning, who unfortunately is recuperating, and hopefully, we can shout out to her at home. I hope she's watching, and she did indicate that, that there was quite a good support from the neighborhood. The, the second piece of new information, I think, is a deliberative one, because the CPC did think about the role of the barn with respect to recreation in the town of Hingham in view of the potential hypothetical future uses of this building and/or the potential future hypothetical uses of the other buildings in the town for recreation. The CPC did feel that the location of the barn, next to the tennis courts, the basketball courts, the baseball field, the most-used playground in town, and the inline skating rink, was going to remain a center of location, and that this was a worthy project to pursue regardless of hypothetical future events in this particular area of the town. And I know Sally Weston is here, who's our project manager, and there may be others here as well that could speak to this, but those are two new, I think, pieces of information for you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. That's very good. I, I personally don't question the merits of that issue. I'm questioning, in view of the announcement I made this morning, this, at the beginning of the meeting, concerning another activity which will solve another, a number of those recreation projects. And I would suggest, my position would be, I'd like to pause at this juncture and not proceed with those until such time as the deal, if you will, falls through. At this point, I have another project, which could be, as you'll find out, at considerably more expense, and this would help pay for that project. And not only would it do that, it would solve the bigger problem that recreation has and that we have as a town in this building. So, I am going to vote not to recommend at this point for that reason. I don't know, Mr. Alexiades, do you have anything you want to add to my comments that might be germane? Or, no? Okay.
I'd like to comment. I know you'd be surprised. I'm going to comment. Do you want to let Paul go first?
No, go ahead.
No? Go ahead. Let Paul go first.
Ladies before gentlemen.
Ladies, ladies first.
Really?
Oh, yeah. That's, come on. Somebody will say that. We don't, so...
Okay. This is a historic...
You can put that in the story. Ladies first, Carol.
I assure you, they don't mean me.
That is...
I didn't, oh. Come on. I didn't say that.
This is a...
This is a historic building. Whatever happens with recreation, whether they move to Point A or Point B, or some as yet unknown, it's going to take a large number of years. It's going to take at least a couple of years. By the time we go back to town meeting to get the funding, by the time we design what's going to happen, by the time we get the money. This is a very historic building. We're still going to have the tennis courts here. You're still going to have Cronin Field. You're going to have the skate rink, the track. It is going to be a center for activity. And whether the cottage factory piece, the headhouse, gets used with recreation, or whether the town finds another use for it, it's another historic building that we can't afford to let go. I don't consider $175,000 a whole lot of money to preserve something like that. And it does, in fact, give us two bathrooms over in that part of the area for the fields and stuff. So, I'm very favorably in favor of this.
Mr. Haley?
I've thought about this long and hard, and as, as a kid who learned how to play tennis up there and taking my own kids, I know it's a popular place, but we have an opportunity in front of us, and if it materializes, as I hope it will, that, that may alter the strategy that the Rec Commission and the town adopts with respect to its approaches to this particular site. You know, we have various playgrounds throughout the town, and I'm unaware of any that have, you know, restrooms in them. And I, and I see it more than just the cost of the restroom and the build-out. I, I see it as, you know, hiring more people to kind of man it. I can't imagine this place would be unmanned. So, I mean, why not just give it a year and just see what shakes out with, you know, this initiative that we just announced tonight? And is there any harm with just parking the money for the time being? You know, and if we, you know, if, if we make out down on, you know, the other end of town, maybe that'll change the deliberative process on whether or not this particular barn should be used for anything other than what it currently is. I think it's storage, but I don't think it's going anywhere. And I, I just don't see the compelling drive to spend this kind of money in light of the initiative that was just announced off the day.
You know, I, I'm, I'm of that same mind. I'm not saying this is not a good thing. It's just, this money, let's hold it, pause it for a year. If the deal doesn't go through, then the town could reconsider this. The building is stabilized, and as I understand it, and I have had, I beg to differ with you, Mr. Curley, I've had conversation, and the town administrators had conversation with members of the Rec Commission, and while they're questioning whether or not our proposal may go through, and they're concerned for the future impact on that, which I appreciate, as, as a member of the executive body that governs this town, I think it's prudent to pause. And let's just wait and see what happens. We'll know, I suspect, in a few weeks what the answer may be, and that may change our minds. But until I have that answer, I'm not ready to vote for it. So, you know...
Can I address one of the points that...
Surely.
Bob Curley again. The Rec, with respect to your point about adding personnel to take care of it, the Rec Commission has committed to manning the headhouse, the barn, and they're going to take care of it out of their budget, which they basically earn from their activities. And I, I think they do see that no matter where they go in the town ultimately, and I know one of the buildings at Bear Cove Park has been discussed, and I know the Hingham Mutual building is new, but I think the Recreation Commission feels solidly that this is going to be an important place for them, and has been for decades, and they would like to move forward. So, if, if this is something that you're suggesting that, you know, we wait a few weeks and see what happens, then perhaps it's better to not vote tonight, withhold your judgment, and maybe make your positions known at town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to give you one point of information, just to correct you. You know, I don't like to do that, but it's highly unlikely that we're going to conclude the Hingham Mutual deal before town meeting. I'm not meeting with them till the end of March. That's our next scheduled negotiating session. So, that gives me, you know, a few weeks in March, in April, to close it and get all the papers signed to go to town meeting, and discuss it with the three of you, 15 members of the Advisory Committee, and everyone else who wants to hear about it. I, I just think that's going to be a very unreal. That's why I said it's very remote that we're going to go back to town meeting. This is unlikely necessitate a special town meeting if you want to, want to move forward on it, because I don't think Hingham Mutual is going to wait till April of 2015.
Well, let me remind you of the speed with which we did the Avalon Building, my friend.
I, I do though. That's why I said it's not impossible, but just, this structure's a little different.
That deal got closed in two meetings.
It did, and you know I will try. But I want to be realistic.
I think Bob makes a reasonable request, so perhaps we'll hold?
I don't have a problem holding.
Whatever you want to do.
I'll hold on this with the understanding, I guess I have to check with Advisory. We're, I only see Lizzie here from Advisory. Oh.
Lucy's there. Oh, and Donna.
Oh, Donna, there you are. Donna's right here. I should go to Donna. Sorry. Almost, you're not a quorum here, are you? No.
We were posted for next door now.
Donna, when would you be voting this issue? Do you have, it's Monday, isn't it?
It's Wednesday.
Is it Wednesday now? I, I had heard Monday. I wasn't sure. We changed it tonight to Wednesday.
We're meeting Tuesday, right?
We're meeting Tuesday.
Could we ask, perhaps, as an additional piece of information, because my recollection may be wrong, but I believe Vicky said that the Recreation Commission had discussed this, and the consensus was, and yes, there may be one person who is not in the consensus, the consensus was they wanted to go forward with the headhouse regardless.
And I would say that's accurate. Just, I did receive a comment from one of the Recreation Commission members who thought that if we... that if we bought Hingham Mutual, they would leave and never come back for town hall.
But they've never talked about that and they've never talked about it.
Correct, you're right. Correct. And I did speak with Chairman Dolan, and she indicated her support, continued support for this.
Okay. Carol? Sure.
I was just wondering, just a clarification on, you want to hold off on the vote, because obviously you couldn't use that money for Hingham Mutual because it can't be used for that reason, but, so you're just saying that you want to hold off because if that goes through, then the recreation department might have more room and they could move into the senior center?
That's correct.
Is that it?
Yeah, not, no, they'd move out. If we go to the Hingham, if the Hingham Mutual building proceeds, recreation may leave this premise as opposed to.
The plan would have them move into the Hingham Mutual renovated building.
Right, so why would the Rec Department then move out if there's more space?
No, they'd be moving along with the senior center over there, both.
The senior center, both.
Oh, the Rec Department would go to the senior center as well?
Yeah.
Both groups.
To them, what happened to all the other, I mean, nobody knows.
We wouldn't, no, we wouldn't. We, well, we have plans for it. I mean, we need more dispatch center room, we need more room for the police. It just means that the renovations that were contemplated for this building would not be needed. That we'd.
So if they're bought, then the renovations won't be needed because of the demarcation?
Not as much, not as many. That's right, because we wouldn't need to expand the location, this building in any way, which is, some of the plans that have been developed may contemplate, may, that may be happening. We wouldn't have to go build something new for the elder services, and Rec is busting at the seams for their activities. So.
I have another question. It's not quite, it's kind of related, but people are sort of wondering, so I'm going to ask it. Times are tough, even though some people think they're not, and, you know, we're talking about tax relief, which isn't really going to be, it's going to be like $65 per person, I heard, or something, but, not to knock it, but people are wondering, now we're talking about renovating the library, which we're all for because we love the library, but town hall, or if not, we're going to be buying this new building, where is that money going to come from? I mean, how is that going to be, isn't that going to offset all the tax relief you're talking about?
Well, a good question, Carol. You know, we just voted to replace two fire engines. We know that's coming, there are going to be additional fire engines coming. We know that, there's discussions on a fourth, on a fourth fire station perhaps that might be needed. The town goes on in its capability. The problem is, how do we go about paying for it? This tax relief proposal gives us the opportunity to do one other thing, which wasn't mentioned, is we have a fiscal policy of trying to keep our debt at a rate of about 10 percent, I think is the policy. We've exceeded that, and that's another reason we're trying to reduce it. That doesn't mean the needs, that doesn't mean the needs don't go away. The other needs will come, and town meeting will deal with those needs when they come up, and they'll decide if that's the issue or they're not. That's not the issue. In this, in this case, I'm saying, I don't want to vote for this. That's my current position, and I, you know, I hear what Ted's saying. I'm not going to vote in three weeks any differently if I'm in negotiation. I've been in negotiations for how many months now? Few. So I'm of a mind, with the town's money, since it's my position, and I'm elected to decide how the town should spend its money, I don't want to proceed with this. That's my vote.
My question is just the taxes, though, because, I mean, $65 average is what the tax relief will be.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I don't know where you got that.
Let's not quote a number, because I.
Can I make an introduction to the table?
I don't have that, so I need to, I would just, before it goes out on the airwaves, I hate to, you know, focus on a number.
Maybe we could have that number, because I thought it was $65, and people are wondering what the dollar amount of relief will be from the tax relief.
As I indicated earlier in the meeting, I will be preparing at the request of one of the citizens here, that I'll be preparing a chart, a graph, a schedule, whatever you want to call it, so that everybody can calculate it for their own property, because that's what everybody wants to do. And I'll give you a factor. It'll be a percentage of your average, your tax bill.
Can I just put another positive spin on this? I don't think the $175,000 is a terrible lot of money to preserve the head house. I also don't think it's going to matter where recreation goes. They, the commission, has said they're going to continue to run programs in the fields, the tennis courts, and the area behind town hall, regardless of where they go, for the near term. If Hingham Mutual works out, there's a lot of wooded area there, there isn't the kind of space you find behind town hall. And I think this is money well spent now.
I'm of a mind to vote no. So I'll make the motion to not recommend $175,000 from the Community Preservation General Fund to be used by the Recreation Commission for infrastructure improvements at the historic cottage factory house.
And for the reasons I stated earlier, I'm going to second that.
Not me.
Okay, so the motion doesn't carry. Okay.
I'd like to also go on record for this one, as I'll be speaking at town meeting for it.
Okay, all right. Okay, you all right?
I'm fine, I'm fine.
Okay, good. Okay, we have one other vote, and.
Do you want me to do it?
Sure.
I make a motion to appoint Gail Ferring to the Council on Aging for a three-year term expiring in 2017.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We do have another one here. Ah, yes, there is one other issue, and he is, he was here earlier, but he's not here now. This is the article PP. We have had, for a number of years, as you know, there, and I'll explain this to the folks at home, we have a weak chief and we have strong chiefs by definition in the state. A weak chief, by definition, doesn't do any of his own hiring or firing. A weak chief requires the approval of the approving authority, which in our, the hiring authority, which is the Board of Selectment. A strong chief does not have to do that. Strong chief can, on his own or her own volition, decide who gets hired and who gets removed. In Hingham, we have a split process. Our fire chief is a strong chief, and our police chief is a weak chief. We believe that there should be some equity to the arrangement, because it would appear that one might have more authority than the other. That, I'll leave you to judge that. So we would like to bring some continuity to it, and there's a proposal we're putting forth to revoke the strong chief position of the fire chief and to make it a weak chief under that definition. Mr.?
So a couple of points about that. First of all, the recommended motion is effective, I believe, June 30, 2015. So it's a year, it's a year off, and, you know, I just want to add a couple, it's unfortunate that the statutes refer to the strong and weak, because certainly we don't feel that way in the common vernacular of those words with respect to Mike Perino and Mark Duff. What this really involves is shifting the hiring practice. Presently, the citizens have no input in the hiring practice within the fire department. Citizen input is reflected through the franchise that each of you three receive from the 23, or 15,000 registered voters in the town of Hingham. And what we're envisioning going forward is a process similar to the police department. The fire department is still going to conduct the bulk of the hiring process, but termination, hiring and termination responsibility will revert to the Board of Selectment as it does in the police department. So Mike Perino goes through the process of recruitment through the civil service list, the tests, the interviews, the assessments, and those are brought forward to you with his recommendations, and then you vote accordingly. I want to make sure that we don't feel, and we don't send the message out that the fire department's not going to be involved in hiring, and the three of you are going to do it going forward. They're going to still conduct the civil service process. And in communities that have repealed the strong chief statute, it falls in that same vein, where administratively, the fire department will go through the hiring process, and they will bring candidates to the Board of Selectment. You will interview the candidates, and then you'll make your selection. Oftentimes, as you know, in the police case, the selections are based upon the ranking on their exams, and a similar case in the fire department.
Okay, good. Any comments, Irma?
I'd like to hear Mark Duff's position on this. He has served the town well for many years, and I'd like to hear from him.
Mark is prepared to speak to the issue. He's indicated his support to me, but I really, well, the town's going to want to hear from him, so.
Yeah, well, I would think we could hold the vote till Tuesday, till he gets, till he comes here.
Sure. That's a reasonable request. All right, but, yes, it's out there. So this has been something that's been discussed for some time, and with Mark, we're in discussions with Mark, as you know, so I think this certainly would warrant an appearance by him next Tuesday, if we can do that. Okay?
Yes, I'll make sure he's here.
Okay, I think it's a quarter of 10.
Can I do two things? I have two announcements. Sorry, just save the date.
If you only do those.
That's all I'm going to do.
Let's go.
Okay, two things. Save the date, we can end on a happy note. Save the date.
Always happy. Come on.
Maybe more, some are more happier than others. Save the date, May 2, for the Fourth of July Parade fundraiser. It's going to be held at Black Rock, so watch for tickets, and they do a silent auction in food and all kinds of stuff, but it'll be at Black Rock Country Club. Then, the second announcement I have is really very exciting. Hingham CPAC and the Hingham Sports Partnership have teamed up to begin offering athletic and recreational activities for special needs kids in Hingham. The new venture is called South Shore SNAP. It's not the greatest name, but it's sports, special needs athletic partnership. There is going to be a kickoff on March 18 at 7:00 at the middle school auditorium to explain the program and to also announce the first initiative, which is an adaptive rowing program that is sponsored, again, hosted by the Hingham High School Rowing Association. So everyone's invited to hear about this brand new venture. It is very exciting, and it's going to be very rewarding.
Good, well, thank you. Thank you for that. Note of congratulations as well to Doug McKay on his selection as Citizen of the Year. And on another note, I was in Vermont, as I mentioned, and town meeting in Vermont, they do it on the same day in all towns. So the news is replete with stories that you can imagine. It all happens at once across the state, and I was, what caught my attention as I was getting up one morning is, I won't tell you the town, but they had had a meeting the night before as the temperature had approached zero. They elected at the school committee meeting, at the school, rather, the town meeting voted to turn off the heat, I suppose in hopes that the meeting would adjourn quickly. About halfway through the meeting, there was a motion from the floor to turn the heat back on. So it passed unanimously. So there is humor in this process, and I was happy to hear that we can all laugh at ourselves. So with that happy note, unless, Mr. Haley, you have something to add?
Good night, ladies and gentlemen.
Good night, Mrs. Calabash. Thank you all, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved, thank you.